Okay, we're going to start. We have a very long meeting tonight. Actually, I'm going to put my phone on. Do not disturb.
You're going to set your alarm for...
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Tell no one to adjourn.
I've said it multiple times in this meeting.
Good aspiration right there.
I like that. So, welcome to the March 28, 2022, meeting. And we will start with a consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar, or consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions? Anything to discuss?
I just have one question, and that is whether or not the correction I made to the November 22nd...
Yes.
It's not made.
Yes, it was sent out in an addendum packet today.
Well, actually, though, there was this one issue, which was the attribution of a quote.
Oh, a different issue.
Yeah, during our executive session, I know there was a quote about buying land for affordable housing at market rates, but I could not recall the speaker.
Oh, okay.
And so, I had thought it had been Linda, but Linda thought it was Marcia, but Marcia's out.
All right, we're going to hold on those.
I think we can just hold those minutes.
Let's hold on those, thank you. I thought you were referring to a different change.
So, move to approve the consent agenda with the... So, withdraw the prior motion and move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the November 22nd executive session number two minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You also caught another thing. You threw me off there. You're so good at catching those things. And we will go to the town manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. There actually are two reports that I'm going to whip through really fast because you have a long agenda. There was the report for the week ending March 18th that was in the agenda packet, and then, I think, over the weekend, I sent out the following week. So, from the first report, the Sustainability Division and the Concord Sustainability Energy Committee are sponsoring a number of workshops in the coming several weeks. There's information in the packet and on the website, a lot of great information, and we're excited to be hosting those for the community and hope for a lot of participation. The Facilities Department installed the charging station at the police... Right, the charging station at the police station for the Tesla, so that is exciting. We do have the Tesla as our first electric cruiser and hoping that works out well. Our Public Works staff provided the First Parish Church's environmental team with a presentation on solid waste, recycling, and food waste composting pilot program that was well-attended. They enjoyed meeting with that group, and we hope to have more of those types of services available in businesses and communities. And churches should know that we do have this information available, and we're happy to go out and meet with them to talk about a variety of issues. The Tourism Department is reporting that the Visitor Center staff will be again working at the North Bridge over the Patriots' Day weekend, and then, beginning May 7th, they're there Mondays and Tuesdays through the end of the fall. You know, the Minuteman, the superintendent of Minuteman National Parks has commented multiple times on how helpful it is to have those staff available at the North Bridge. The Natural Resources Division reported that they installed some bluebird boxes at Haywood Meadow. I thought it was interesting. They said that they observed a pair of bluebirds checking out the bluebird boxes shortly after they were installed. I just, that particularly struck me. We had over 200 seniors participate in the St. Patrick's Day luncheon sponsored by the high school, and we had students that actually delivered St. Patrick's Day meals to seniors that weren't able to come up and, to come out and pick up their lunch. So, that's another nice program again. And the COA is wanting to let people know that they have 18 seniors that are on the waitlist for computers, and if anybody has a computer or laptop in their household that they are not using and they would like to donate it to the Council on Aging, the senior center would be happy to take that and refurbish it and send it out to a senior that is in need of a laptop. And then, quickly, from the next report, I wanted to mention that we had our first Insurance Advisory Committee meeting last week. The Insurance Advisory Committee is an employee committee made up of union and non-union members to discuss health insurance issues, and as the board knows, health insurance is a big topic for our employees. The meeting was very well-attended. The engagement was really incredible, and we have three additional meetings scheduled in next month to conclude the work on talking about health insurance offerings for fiscal '23. Under the Police Department, there is a log of activities, including mention of the pellet gun incidents that we had, the work that the Concord Police Department has done to assist Carlisle to locate the missing young lady. Let's see, we had a school crossing appreciation day on March 23rd. Overnight parking restrictions will end this week on March 31st. There's mention about the Patriots' Day events, and I know you'll be talking about that later this evening. We conducted the annual life safety inspections at the Middlesex School, have started discussions on the wastewater treatment plant at the middle school with our staff, Health Department staff, Public Works staff, the engineer for the project, so that is ongoing. And then, I guess the last thing that I'll mention is parking restrictions at the BD Center, and we've talked about that. Those are going into effect, and we ask that all BD membership make sure to have their placards and place those in their vehicles when they're at the BD Center.
Was it in effect today, right? Is the first day?
Let's see, it might be. You know, that, I'm not sure. I don't have that noted, but, yeah, okay.
I'm not 100% sure.
Thank you very much for that. Are there questions?
I have two questions.
All right, Henry.
One is, I see, actually, week after week, the number of traffic citations issued by the Police Department is up around 200, which means it's about 25 a day, and I wonder if most of that is from Route 2, or it seems like a very high number.
I know throughout the entirety of the pandemic, the police chief has reported on the number of stops on Route 2, that it's increased, that the rate of speed at which people have been traveling, particularly early in the pandemic, was really crazy. And so, I do believe a lot of that is related to Route 2.
Do we have an obligation to patrol Route 2? It's a state highway, and it's also covered by the state police, isn't it?
It is. I don't know that we have an obligation to do so, but we only have, the state police cover a lot of territory, and I think that it's been particularly helpful to have the local police department patrolling there. Particularly, I mean, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of activity over there, and I think that's an important part of their business.
The other question is about the septic system at the middle school. Is that going to be a technical problem which will have a significant, possible significant increase in the cost? Because it's noted that it's in a groundwater conservancy district and so on, and it looks like everybody's geared up to really deal with that. I mean, is that something that we should be looking for a, to become an issue?
Matt, I don't, you've been participating a lot more.
Yeah, I speak to two different things that, you know, may be tangential, but the first, the only thing that I've heard about the septic system is that there were questions about the capacity of the septic system that would be required, and it was clarified that as-designed capacity would be sufficient according to the state regulations. So, that matter was settled, and the, as the middle school building committee is conscious of the groundwater conservancy district and the implications of being in that district, and I just would cite one example, that just this past week in our meeting, we determined that we could not use a diesel generator as had been proposed as a backup power source because large-scale diesel, you know, tanks cannot be placed over a groundwater conservancy district. So, we will have to run a natural gas line for that generator. But, that, again, doesn't directly answer your question, but I just, it gives you a couple of...
But it answers some other questions, which are just fine.
Data points that are, you know, that I think would lead me to suspect that we're okay on that.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Other questions for the interim town manager?
Thank you for those reports, and thank you to Ned Perry and the Mass Department of Corrections for those donations in the consent agenda. So, tonight, we have a very busy agenda. I'm going to ask everybody to try and be brief. Our town meeting is Sunday, May 1st at 1:00 p.m. at the high school. There is a slight error in the packet about the date for the Honored Citizen of the Year. It will not be May 1st, it will be April 30th at 2:30 p.m. at Harvey Wheeler. On April 14th at 7:00 p.m. in this building, in the townhouse, there will be a fiber broadband public forum. Look for more information to come about that. It will be in the evening. And I have a brief statement to read as well. It has come to our attention that some people are continuing to harass town staff and contractors as they go about their duties at White Pond. Others are vandalizing trees on private property in Estabrook Woods. Still, others are shooting pellet guns at people. Civility means we sometimes have to agree to disagree. For example, we certainly understand that not everyone agrees with every aspect of the White Pond project. However, town meeting voted at least twice to engage in the project and to fund it. There is never any excuse for personal attacks, and there is not any value in doing so. To be frank, these behaviors benefit no one, but they are an embarrassment and a hazard to the entire town of Concord. Our town of Concord prides itself on civil discourse. Ongoing debate and peaceful protests are an important part of that process, but trespassing, vandalism, and personal attack will not be tolerated. These actions are subject to prosecution, and they have all been referred to the Concord Police Department. I hope everyone will join me in deploring these behaviors. If you see someone acting inappropriately, do not hesitate to speak up. Call 911 when necessary. We all need to act to ensure that the unfortunate actions of a few don't compromise the civility, character, and safety of our town. Thank you. And now, we will meet with a...
Can I add one public meeting announcement to the list that you had, which was, the Recreation Commission will be holding a public meeting on March 30th at 7:00 p.m. here to discuss the Concord-Carlisle Youth Baseball Organization's proposal to add temporary fencing and other changes at Wright Out Park. And that will also be a hybrid meeting with Zoom links are available, and you can find the announcement on the town website.
Thank you. Next, we have a meeting with the Concord Independent Battery, and we're going to authorize firing for Patriots' Day, April 18th, et cetera. Welcome, gentlemen. Please introduce yourselves.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Phil Kenny. I'm the president of Concord Independent Battery.
John Thompson, I'm the secretary.
Okay, I'd ask, if you could put the microphone, speak, yeah, speak right into it because of the, yeah, like this, actually, okay. Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay.
So, do you want to give us a brief update of your activities and let us know? We need to authorize the firing of the cannons, so...
So, as you all know, we have a signed contract with the town of Concord, and in that contract, it's very specific details of what we need to do on an annualized basis, what we need to comply with as far as being in position to fire the cannon, which, as you all know, the cannons are owned by the town, and we're merely the stewards, the people that own the cannon to try and maintain them and all that. So, the listing on the letter that I sent to Carrie about a week ago is in respect to that list of obligations, and I'm actually working with Chris Carmody on some of the details associated with this over the last couple of years. And so, we do this every year towards the end of March, and that just sets the tone for approvals for our firing for the next 12 months, right?
Right.
And this is really the intent, so what I do with this, I list everything that we, it's a lot, I'm not going to read it all, there's a lot of detail associated with it. Some of the stuff, obviously, is still ongoing. Our training is continuing to go forward. We did have a truncated two years for obvious reasons, but this past, this past year, we actually were able, with the protocols in place, were able to fire at a number of different events and locations, some here in the town of Concord, one in Lincoln, one at a funeral up in Carlisle, and we were also invited last year to fire at Fort Independence in Boston for the annual USS Constitution turnaround. So, we've done those things, and basically, having those hours gave us enough activity and training that we come into this year pretty well-established what the requirements are. We continue to train, we did last week, and we are going to begin this week as well as we get into the 19th. The intent here is to go through that, make sure you've had the chance to review it, and I sent that to you, Chris, and then, that we complied with those requirements, and we're looking for the approval to go forward for the next 12 months.
And we appreciate everything you do, and we do have a list in our package of all of those dates, and thank you for sending all of that in.
Okay.
Are there questions from the board? Linda?
So, thank you also for all the events that you appear at for Concord and elsewhere on our behalf, so thank you. This is, you can educate me on this point. I noticed in your list, you had the last Boriscope inspection was last year, about this time, actually.
Correct.
Do you have another one? Is that annual?
The contract, and actually, the people from the army said once every five years is more than enough.
Okay.
I think enough, I think the issue that they really drive with us is the cannons were re-sleeved, because they're brass cannons, but they were really re-sleeved with steel. That was done a while ago, but they said you could fire this for the next 100 years, and you wouldn't see us. And the only reason is, the basic reason, that there's no projectile, so there's no pressure within the barrel itself, and it's just as clear as can be. So, they come every five years, they run a Boriscope through us, and they give us certification. They come down from Waterville Armory up in Albany, New York, and it's once every five years, and that's what they recommended, and that's what the town took, and we took as a requirement, so it's in the contract as well.
Terrific. I told you, you would be educating me, so thank you.
Do we have other questions? Okay, are we ready for a motion, then?
I could add one thing if I may, please.
Oh, sure.
I did add something to this requirement, which we knew about because it came into us, was a request, again, from the USS Constitution to fire at Fort Independence on June 17th of this year. I wanted to do it now because it's here, right?
Right.
But generally, when these come up through the year, we may have different requests that come during the year. We may have a person in town of Concord that has a funeral would request a battery, and we try and, we try and meet those requirements based on that. But every time we do that, two things happen. One is, we request from the town manager the permission to fire, and if it's out of town, taking the guns out of town, we ask for that permission as well. And then, obviously, we close with the local fire services for the permit to fire, all right? So, I do want to have that approval as well for the 17th of June.
Thank you.
So, on that last, because the June 17th is in the letter, so it's documented as a date, is there any additional thing that the motion needs to contain to take the cannon off-site?
Not that we're aware of today.
Well, it sounds like, yes, it sounds like we need to give permission to fire on those dates, and we need permission...
It is there.
We need permission to have them bring the cannons off-site for that one date.
That one date, but as I said in my letter as well, because we don't know what's going to happen in September.
Okay.
So, and as we've done in the past, we'll reach out for any additional requests when and if they come. We just don't know when they would be, right? And it might be a situation like Fort Independence, or like two years ago, I think it was two or three times we've been down to that mass fallen heroes that's the, down in the Seaport District. They've asked us to come fire for that as well, and we've done that as well.
You guys really get around. It's great, talented group.
Well, you know, I'll be honest, and I'm going to beat the drum a little bit. I mean, people come up to us and ask, where are you guys from? What do you do? And it was interesting, we were in Lincoln last year for July 4th, was it, or?
I think so.
Or it might have been Memorial Day, Memorial Day, and the senator from the North Shore, I can't remember her name now, she's from North Shore, but she came up and she said, wow, this is really interesting. Where are you guys? We're just right up in Concord and all that. No idea at all. Now, that's upon us, that's our fault. We need to make sure that we get the word out about what these guns represent and how they've been representing Concord, you know, for the purpose of what Concord happened and some these, for all these years. So, we want to beat the drum a little bit on that, so we go forward.
Well, you should. You guys do an excellent job. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I'm looking for those approvals as well.
All right.
So, move to approve the Concord Independent Batteries' application for permission to fire on the dates and times listed in their letter to the Select Board dated March 21st, 2022, and also to remove the cannon to the June 17th USS Constitution underway event in Boston Harbor, as described in the board packet for this meeting.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Leave before we change your mind.
And maybe you want to stick around for a minute. We're also going to discuss an idea about the Ukrainian Veterans Club. Do I have that right, Henry? Do I have, okay, Veterans Administration of Ukraine. And we have also with us Jaliska from the Celebrations and Ceremonies Committee. So, Henry, do you want to present your idea?
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much. Thank you for everybody coming to consider this with us. I've been working very actively in restarting the Patriots' Day activities, and so, I've been, you know, involved in many of the details of it, including, you know, what type of a parade we were going to have and who was going to participate in it. And I recognize that there was an opportunity for us to recognize something that was really very important, that was going on in the world today, that was very consistent with the message of Patriots' Day, that, and that is, the struggle that's going on in the Ukraine, which is, is like, very much like what we went through over 200 years ago, a fight for independence, for freedom, for liberty, for democracy, to overthrow tyranny. And fortunately, this is an issue and a concern that I think almost everybody shares. It is not political, it is not controversial, it is not partisan in any respect, which makes it rather unique for something of this kind. And it occurred to me that it would be, would be a very meaningful addition to our Patriots' Day parade, to have some Ukrainians or some Ukrainian organization march in our Patriots' Day parade by our invitation, for us as a town to recognize, at least symbolically, the struggle that's going on in Ukraine, and also to make it clear that this town stands for the same thing that it stood for 200 years ago in the struggle for freedom. This is not unusual for us. We have, in many cases, engaged ourselves in activities that went way beyond the borders of our own town. We have sister cities in South America and Asia. We have, we have declarations and proclamations for things like the Holocaust, which we adopted recently and adopt every year. And so, I think this town is part of the world. It is where, we like to say, it all started, and I think we should keep that spirit alive by recognizing things that change in the world that still have great relevance to what this town means and what our Patriots' Day means.
Okay. And Jaliska, you are the chair of the Celebrations and Ceremonies Committee, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And did your committee discuss this idea?
We have, actually, at the past two meetings that we did have, which Henry is our Select Board liaison, so thank you for that.
And what does your committee?
So, our committee is very conflicted because it is a political issue. It's, we're being, they're not comfortable, especially because we have told all the local groups, we have, we do have other people in previous past years have had outside groups outside of the New England area come to our parade and march, where people stay at Fenn, they stay at other areas close by, they camp on somewhere in Concord, and they participate in the parade. For this year, we had voted in the very beginning to make this a local parade because it has been now two years of inactivity, which is unfortunate. The people that started the committee even from two years ago, when we were ready to go and we had to cancel because of COVID, those people are off of the committee now. Some of the people on the committee, I know this is not a decision, have not seen a Patriots' Day parade, and yes, it is rote. We have all the same systems in place and all the safety concerns that everyone else is, they're very comfortable with the town and the support that we have, so I appreciate that. But they're not comfortable with the fact that this decision was made right now, you know, we just had the 40 days ago, the protocols have been lifted for COVID. That's 40 days. We have 21 days before the parade, and in the 21 days to, and it's, you know, we have a lot of things to kind of consider. It was voted 100% not to invite this particular group, not because they are veterans or anything like that, but they are coming from out of state. They're coming from New York, which has nothing, it's just, we wanted to keep it local this year. We've said that to all of our groups. We're maintaining that some of our parents and groups have younger kids, they're still worried about it. People on my committee are still worried about it, having to wear the masks, they're not comfortable yet. If we can make this parade as local as we can, get everybody back on the same footing, and I really want this to be very successful so that next year, we can double what our current group is right now, which is roughly about 35 groups are participating this year. Normally, we have upwards of 70 plus, so I'd like that group, that number to grow for next year. I'm very content with our numbers that we have currently, especially with the 21 days before Patriots' Day.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted, first of all, thank both of you for working so hard to make this Patriots' Day come alive again, and it really looks like you have a lot of great events planned. So, do we have some questions?
Can I respond to, I think, some misinformation, and that is, the group that we are most likely to invite is actually a Massachusetts Ukrainian-American... to invite is actually a Massachusetts Ukrainian-American Veterans Group, who are all, who live locally, who've served in the United States military, and happen to be of Ukrainian descent, and maintain their ties to Ukraine. But this is not, we're not talking about a ragtag bunch of people coming in from out of state. We're talking about if they're willing to come. And I have not, I have not even raised the question with any potential participants, because I did not want to raise the issue with them and then we have to tell them that the town did not want them.
I appreciate that. Right.
So, but I think we found a very, a very good, you know, solution to this by finding a Veterans Group, like there are Veterans of Foreign Wars, American Legion connections for these people, and I can give you the information. I think that, I don't see this as political. I truly don't. I don't think there's anybody, very few people in this country, and certainly this town, that see this as a political issue. All of our allies are united. Most, all of our parties are united on this. They may have disagreements about exactly how to handle it, but certainly nobody fails to recognize that this is a valiant struggle being waged by heroic people to preserve their freedom.
Right. I think everyone agrees with that.
And this is the opportunity. If we tell them, wait till next year, who knows where they're going to be. And this is the time. And I think it's also a really great way to reinitiate this event. It's a special, it's something that's special that we can offer, and it, and there's no more trouble to the committee than there would be in having, you know, a group of colonial fife and drummers come from Lamonster.
Well, Henry, I do appreciate that you're so adamant about this particular group. I feel that also this late hour in the game, it is, yes, you may think that we can just invite them and they can come, but if they are attached to any veteran or any US government, there are forms that we have to file and make sure that they can, even if they're coming from around Massachusetts, we have forms that we need to file with whatever group that they're particularly.
We'll take care of the paperwork.
But I would feel a lot more comfortable, our committee is more comfortable with not having this particular group at this late stage.
All right. So, Susan?
Yeah, I just, thank you both. Just an interesting discussion. I don't think anyone insinuated that it was a ragtag group that was coming.
Mention of people coming from out of state and.
Well, I think it doesn't, it's not.
Exposed to COVID and that kind of thing.
It's not, it's not related to the political issue. I don't think there's anyone that's on the other side of the political issue with regard to the Ukraine. I think what Jaliska has pointed out in her committee is, has talked about and decided that it's a public safety thing with regard to COVID and keeping it local for the three weeks between, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with COVID. But I would support the position of the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, since this is their territory.
Okay. Linda and Matt? Matt, you looked like you were going to say something.
Well, you know, I appreciate the introduction of this idea, and I understand that there's a timeliness to this particular idea also. But I think in general, as we work with committees over the year, we try to support them in their endeavors. And this was extraordinary as it was. You had a short, the committee had a short time to ramp up.
Right.
So that we could reintroduce the parade. And I think they've taken that challenge on and said they would proceed with that. And so I would like to support them on that. And taking nothing away from the good idea that you've brought, I just think the timing and the circumstances are such that.
Yeah, I just would respond to that and say, if it weren't for the efforts that a number of us exerted in order to bring this activity back, we would not have had it this year. Originally, we were told, when we asked for a commitment from the committee to run a Patriots' Day Parade this year, we were told they didn't have the bandwidth to do it. Then we had to come up with a plan that was a plan for a truncated and abbreviated Patriots' Day Parade, which was the impetus for getting this thing going. So, I don't, I don't have, I feel that this is part of the effort that we've made in order to make this event come back this year and not next year.
And all of us really appreciate all of the work that you've done, Henry, Jaliska, your committee, the Independent Battery, everybody on short notice has really pulled together. It looks like a fantastic array of events, and we really, and we really appreciate your idea too, Henry. But I think we need to, as a board, decide, and we haven't heard yet from Matt.
Well, all I would just say is that it is quite telling to me that the committee, after looking at this in two different meetings and being responsible for the parade unanimously decided, you know, not to proceed. So, I would really like to defer to their judgment on this as well as to, you know, recognize just how logistically challenging it is to put this on, and that I don't think it is wise to take the committee that is tasked with administering this and imposing a condition on them. So, that's where I stand. I mean, I have to say, I think it's an inspiring concept. You know, this is the moment, if we were to take it, but it's, you know, not really logistically feasible or potentially wise from a public health perspective, perhaps. But I don't even want to second guess all of that myself. I really would defer to the judgment of the committee that we've charged with this responsibility.
Okay. Carrie, do you have, you looked like maybe you had something to add, or?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I do feel like I communicated that to you, but I did not.
Okay. I'm gonna have my glasses on, so, all right. Okay, then, you know, this is a difficult decision. I think, Henry, we really love the idea of it. And I just think, logistically, we have to then trust the committee that we've appointed to run the program. And if they're unanimous, and the majority of the board is saying, let's go with the committee's recommendation. So, great idea, and maybe we can do something in the near future. July 4th, I don't know.
You know, I don't see this as much an administrative issue. I see it as a policy issue, which I would expect that the committee might feel uncomfortable by making a decision of this kind, which they might think was above their pay grade, which is one reason that it is here now.
Right.
Because it's a decision on, at the level at which I think it's appropriate for the Select Board to make the decision.
Right.
But I didn't hear that the committee asked to appeal to the Select Board to make the decision. The committee decided that they would not recommend this. So, I mean, I don't think it's a matter of pay grade.
Well, I, actually, I was at the meeting in which I think the decision was made, and actually, no vote was taken. And, I mean, these are technicalities, but there were three people who are not even a majority, I think, who just expressed some reservations about it, based on things like that it was, we'd never done it before. And these are the things that Jaliska mentioned in her email about the reasons that the committee did not favor it. The first was that the group had not been previously included, which would apply to any group that you want to have as, participate as a new group in the parade. And the other was that they prohibited advocacy materials, noise makers, and so on, which are not protected, which were not permitted. This is not an advocacy group, and they're not going to have balloons and noise makers.
Right. Okay.
So I think, if I may.
I'll give you the last word.
Thank you so much. I appreciate coming to the Select Board today and listening to what we had to say. And thank you, Henry. I feel that any other year, if we had more time, I, you know, it could be open for discussion for some other time for that to happen. And I appreciate all the work that you guys do. So, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. I just want to remind the folks at home watching, please make sure your microphone is muted. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to another update from Henry, the 250th. What can you tell us?
What can I tell you about that? Well, as you can see, I've been busy.
Yes.
With a number of other things. And also, John Arena, who has been of great help to me in pulling this whole, this whole thing together, has been away for the last week or 10 days. But we do, as I previously reported, have asked about 75 different, very likely people about their interest to participate. And I have reported that we had, 50 of them had responded favorably. And what I want to do now, I am going to contact the, about a dozen or 15 of those people and meet with them personally, and then talk to them about their plans and what they would like to see us do, and for me to be able, and for John to feel out whether they would be the appropriate people to serve on this committee.
Okay. Can I just stop you there for a minute, before you continue? So, you've reached out to 75 people, which is wonderful. And 50 of them, when you say 50 have responded, are you saying they've filled out the volunteer cards?
My last report I have of the 50, 25 have submitted green cards.
Ah, 25.
The green, that database is now in transition, as we know from another event. And.
So are the other 25 planning to fill out the cards, or they're not sure?
I don't know their status. I don't know their status. I think some of them, we're open to persuasion, because there's some of that, some of the people on that list, I know, that I need to approach personally in order to encourage them to participate.
Okay. And so your suggestion is that you want to take about 12 of them and do some personal interviews?
I think it is, I think it is more or less our common practice before any liaison to a committee makes a nomination, that they, if you will, I guess it's not the right word, but we'll call it interview, the candidates.
Yes, but basically, we interview all of the candidates, I believe. But in this case, maybe there aren't too many. 50 definitely sounds like too many.
Well, it's not going to be too many ultimately, because there are going to have to be at least half a dozen subcommittees.
Right.
So, people who are not on the executive, so the executive committee may very well be appropriate for serving on some special committee, such as public safety, or education, or entertainment, or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a question. So, do you have a timeline for this, Henry? Because we talked about at the beginning of March, and today was, I thought, the day that you were going to bring forth potential candidates.
As I said, I've been, we've been busy with a lot, a number of things that have been time-consuming and taken.
So what's your projection, then?
Well, the last amendment, or the last discussion of the charge to the committee was that we would, that we would have increased the size of the executive committee from nine to 12 sometime in July. So, but I think that we can probably get.
Right. Linda, do you want to?
Yeah. You know, we have had a lot on our plate this year. I think we were originally hoping that we would get this committee started earlier in the year, and that once we had that committee in place, and they were operating for a while, that we would anticipate that there would be, as you say, Henry, an increase in membership.
That's how I remember it. Right. And we also have some very specific slots in that charge, right?
There are.
We don't need to read them all off right now.
There were, originally, there was a long list, about a dozen or 15, and that was reduced to about eight or 10.
Yeah. So, I think what we need to do tonight, in the next few minutes, we don't want to, is just come up with a plan. And it might be what Henry is saying, that we let him go off and interview about 12 of them, and then come back to us in a month. Or we, maybe we have a different system.
Can I ask, is the intention, Henry, to get the whole group, the 12, together, or go through the process and present the 12 at once, or to present members in not necessarily one group? I just wanted to write your thinking.
I think it would be as they come.
Yeah, okay.
And I think once we get a quorum, we can then, I mean, if it's going to be nine to start with, if we have five, we'll have a quorum.
Right. That was the idea. We want to get started. Right. Linda?
So if I may, you know, Henry, one of the concepts, I remember us talking about in the fall, I guess it was, was the importance of, I recall you saying that you wanted to keep it as open as possible to bring in as many interested people, and that from that, we could be more selective in terms of the executive group itself, and make sure that we had the right resourcefulness, outreach power, and all the good things that are going to be required at an executive committee level. So, for me, it's probably important that you do do these interviews, but that you, I thought we had some understanding that you would bring a group to us, so that we could look at the group and see if we had the compilation and sort of the committee power that we know is needed.
Right. So, thank you for saying that, Linda. If I may, just really quickly, I don't think that we formally discussed how we were going to do it, but I like that suggestion. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Well, at least those ideas were thrown out.
Well, but, you know, that would mean that discussing, discussing that in open session.
Absolutely. So I think what we'd have to do is say.
And that is, that will be an issue about, you know, making choices between people to serve on a committee.
Right. But I think what we could do is, we could say, you know, person A has public safety experience, and person G has historical experience. And we could talk about it that way in open session. And we don't have to say anything negative about person Z if we don't want them on the committee. In other words, we can just say, I like this person for, because they have this experience, and the other, you know, there's a positive way of talking about it, I guess.
Well, I think what we, at least the way I saw it, is that the initial group would be the people who would have the managerial, organizational, and executive experience to come up with a structure for the organization, and that that was not necessarily a group that would be representative of multiple points of view. It would be a group of people who are, would have the ability to do the organization, to bring in the people that represented the spectrum.
I think they probably, in my opinion, they need both. I think we need that managerial framework, and we need that diversity of experience, and in our. And in our community, we have an amazing talent pool of people. I don't think we want to have a problem finding that, but you know, let's at least try. That's just my opinion.
Well, you know, you tell me what you want to do.
Matt and Susan, you guys?
I just would ask, Henry, if you need any help recruiting or anything, you know, I would like to challenge us to have the, a committee that could be seated and hold a meeting by Patriots' Day because that's three years before the event and I think that's relatively short.
That's two weeks from now.
Three, three weeks, right.
But yes. I mean, to get that, at least that quorum, the five, right? So, because I, I just think otherwise, we're, we're really behind.
Right, right. And Henry, you're the one who pointed that out as soon as you got on, and you're absolutely right.
You've kept me busy since then.
Yes.
I've only been on the, on the board for three months now, what, no, six months.
But also, I think, do we have the designated town employee? I mean, when I look at the list, right, one of them is a town, supposed to be a town employee. So has that been discussed? Is there somebody that's been identified? Because that one would seem like a different kind of a process, right?
I mean, to my knowledge, it has not been discussed, but the logical choice would be our tourism and vitality manager.
So that's a good point, Matt. If we have Henry and we have John Arena that we have appointed, right?
Right.
And if Carrie wants to recommend Beth Williams or whoever, now we've got three, we only need two more in the next few weeks. I think that is doable and they could start meeting and have a quorum. And if you need help and you want to delegate that we do some of the interviews, let us know.
Or just, you know, a sign. I mean, if, if one or more of these different kinds of backgrounds isn't in your wheelhouse, then maybe we can, we can work on those, right? Just any, any help you need.
Right, right, any help you need. So if there's, if there's 50 volunteer cards, you're not going to finish that in three weeks, so give us each three or four and let's get it done. So you want to, you can be the coordinator of, of the whole interview process and, and I will put this back on the agenda on April 11th, which is two weeks from today. Any other discussion about that?
No, but I do have a couple other pieces to the 250th, if I, if I may.
All right, oh, right. Thank you for remembering that.
I believe Mike Lawson is in the audience.
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, very good, thank you. So Mike is our Select Board Appointee to the State 250th Commission, which has just recently met and he's going to give us an update. Mike has also been on the 2025 Battle Road Group, which is, he can explain to you what that is. So thank you, Mike, for being here and if you speak to both of those, that would be great.
Yes, thank you very much, Mike.
Nice to see everybody. The Commission finally had its first meeting on March 15th. Was quite a meeting, there are 40 people on the Commission, quite a representation from across the Commonwealth. And in addition to myself, the names that you might, you might know, Jim Hinton, who's a reenactor and works for the National Park Service is on the committee and so is Senator Barrett. The Committee is chaired by Representative Carol Fiola and Senator Edward Kennedy. I think what's important for you to know is that the Commission has a very specific charge. And its, its charge is really focused on investigating and studying the promotion and celebration of the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution. And their plan is to develop a comprehensive plan for the celebration. And in addition, particularly to develop opportunities for underrepresented people to be able to participate. And finally, of course, I will have to issue a report. There's a couple of takeaways I had from the first meeting, I think are important to you. The Committee is going to break down, as Henry just mentioned, similar to what you planned, the Committee is going to break down into subcommittees so that they can meet more effectively, perhaps get their work done. The one thing I would say that came out of that, there's going to be a lot of attention played, paid to finance. Everybody's quite aware that the scale of the celebration that will happen is going to be a very costly affair. And I remember my conversations with the previous superintendent of the National Park commenting that the, the last celebration in 1975 is a scale cost him almost $60,000. So I think we, I think one thing is to try to get ahead a little bit, the thinking about what costs are going to be associated with this. The State Commission plans to be doing some fundraising and I'm not yet clear if the funds are going to be monies that would be available to the various cities and towns or whether it's just going to be used for their own, for their own promotional activities. And finally, and I'm glad you were talking about this tonight, I think it's going to be very important to strike, to try to stay as far ahead of this as, as is possible. The reason I lobbied Senator Barrett for representation of the towns along the Battle Road was my concern that some statewide commission would start planning things without a great deal of information or knowledge about what actually went on in the various towns. And I think I was somewhat relieved at the first meeting that that's likely not to be the case, but I think it's very important for us to try to stay ahead as possible. Linda mentioned the Battle Road 250 Group. That's a group that I assembled while I was still a member of the Select Board. It was representatives from all of the area towns and we met a few times. And we have concluded that our role in this is simply going to be to be a coordinating committee between the towns of Lexington, Arlington, Concord and Lincoln. Although there is participation in this committee from Hanscom Air Force Base and from Bedford and from the United States Air Force. So we will, that coordinating committee will continue to meet, we haven't met in a while, but we will continue to meet. And I have a summary of the Commission's charge that I would be more than happy to send along, Madam Chair, if that would be helpful to you.
Thank you, yes.
Along with the list of the committee members. And so I think that's really all I really have to report.
Thank you, we'll look forward to receiving that. And you just jogged my memory about a question. Who will be in charge of getting on the, getting on the presidential calendar? Will it be the statewide committee, commission or will it also be individual towns?
I don't know yet. The Battle Road 250 Committee did talk about that. As you might remember, 1975, President Ford visited Concord, it was quite a large crowd. There's also been talk of inviting someone from the royal family. So I suspect that'll be a topic that will come up at this 250th and if it doesn't come up at the next meeting, I'll be sure to raise it.
Great, because I, I know three years out might not even be enough time at this point, I'm hoping it is, so we need to get on that. Linda.
So Mike, Bob Gross just recently at one of our meetings mentioned that in 1875, for the celebration of the American Revolution, the Concord managed to invite the entire legislature out to Concord for that celebration.
Oh my. Well, I think, I think in 1875, another president visited here because some of you know that when my wife was superintendent of National Park, we lived for a while in the bullet hole house on Monument Street. And we had pictures of the president out in front of the bullet hole house with bunting all, all, all over the place. So it was quite, quite a celebration.
Any other questions, comments, Mike?
I just had one for Mike. You had talked about the Battle Road Committee being a coordinating body and it would be great for us to get some sort of regular information about the state of our neighboring towns' plans for the celebration, you know?
Sure, we, that's exactly what we've, we've talked about and we've been assembling a list. All of the towns, Lincoln, Lexington, Arlington, Bedford and ourselves, of course, have a very long history of providing certain activities around, around April 19th event. And the Commission actually put together a preliminary list of all of the activities that they know about and I'll send that along to you as, as well.
Thank you.
Linda. Mike, did the, do you know at this time how often the Commission, the State Commission is going to meet?
I don't, I think the, the whole Commission, I suspect, is not going to meet as, as frequently as the subcommittees. The next meeting that we're going to have is going to be aimed at structuring these subcommittees so they can spin off and deal with various aspects of the committee's charge. So I suspect the full committee will probably not meet all that often.
I think that would be instructive for us as well, so perhaps you can come back in a month or so or?
Let us know, Mike, when, when you would like to come back and we can continue our discussion. And in the meantime, we'll look forward to receiving those materials. Thank you so much.
Just bring them to the townhouse and would that be satisfactory?
Sure, that's fine, yes. And thanks so much for serving on both of these, the statewide commission and the coordinating committee, it's really helpful.
My pleasure, nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to be continuing on to the State Zoning Act. As some of us know, the MBTA Communities' Requirement for Multifamily Housing is a new proposed zoning change. And our goal tonight is to get a little bit up to speed on that and to find out from the Planning Board whether you would like the Select Board to join in your letter or send our own letter or stay out of the way or what you would like us to do. Do we have someone, I guess, on, I don't see anyone in the room, is there someone on Zoom?
There is.
Elizabeth, hi.
Hi, it's Elizabeth Hughes, the Town Planner. I'm going to apologize, I've, I've been out with a cold, so if I, if I mute myself, it's because I'm going to start coughing, so I'll try and, I'll try and get through this as best I can, so I apologize.
Thank you for joining us, thank you.
I was intending on being there in person, but I don't think you want me there. So I'm not sure how much of information or introduction you need. Just very briefly, the state legislator, legislation amended the zoning act and it was, those amendments to the zoning act were adopted in January of last year. There were various amendments made to the entire zoning act, there's 17 sections in the zoning act. One of those amendments was the addition of a new section, Section 3A, which has been now termed the MBTA Communities' Requirement. It is not a proposal, it is, it is in, in the zoning act, it is law, it is a requirement for the 100 or so MBTA communities that have been defined as communities with commuter rail, buses, subway transit stops. So as far as the, there's, there's two aspects to all of this. There's the requirements in the law, which says MBTA communities have to have a, an area of reasonable size zoned to allow multifamily at a density of 15 units per acre. It cannot be age or family restricted. And, excuse me, sorry. And it has to be within half a mile of the transit stop. And the legislation under Section 3A goes on to state that if a community does not comply, then there are three funding programs that the community will not be eligible for. And the third aspect of Section 3A is that the Department of Housing and Community and Development has to promulgate guidelines on, guidelines on how communities will be found in compliance with this new Section 3A. So tonight's discussion is about those draft guidelines and the requirements that DHCD has incorporated into those guidelines that communities are given the opportunity and the public is given the opportunity to comment on these guidelines. The deadline is this Thursday, March 31st. I prepared a memo to the Planning Board, which I believe was given to the Select Board, just giving a brief overview of the new legislation and the requirements under Section 3A. And then my opinion on different aspects of the guidelines and the, the difficulties and some of the items that DHCD has included in those guidelines, which the Planning Board took that memo and prepared a memo to the Select Board, which they would like to forward on to the, to DHCD for comments on the draft guidelines. I don't know if you would like me to go into more detail into the memo from the Planning Board or if you just want me to add?
We have, we do have that memo. Thank you very much for doing all of that legwork. We have both the memo, we have three memos. One that you've written, one that the Planning Board then wrote to the Select Board dated March 25th. We also have another one from the MAPC. And I believe we have a kind of a sample from the town of Lincoln. So we have quite a bit of material here and I guess what we want to end up with is, do you, Elizabeth or Marsha or the Planning Board, want the Select Board to sign on to your memo or send our own memo or to stay out of it for now?
We also have a set of, of comments that are proposed by the, the Planning, the Planning Board to the.
Right.
Whoever it is.
Right, I think that's this memo, March 25th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the memo that Elizabeth helped write, I think, March 25th, that's a five-page memo here. So I don't think that, I don't think we have the time or the expertise to be able to redo what the Planning Board has done with all of the technical details in this memo. But perhaps we can help in some way.
I, I thought that that meant the proposed memo was quite, quite a good job, did it, and addressed many of the issues.
Yes.
But I, I would have just a couple of other issues I think might be considered.
Okay.
One is, I think it's remarkable that there is no mention, whatever, of affordability anyplace in the program or the plan. And we have no idea how this would interact with our 40B quota. And so I think that that's something that needs some attention. Another thing that I think is quite important is if the object of this program is to put housing near transportation hubs, I think there needs to be some kind of commitment from the MBTA. from the MBTA to continue to provide service at a reasonable cost that can be afforded by the people who will live in this multifamily housing. And then finally, if you look at what the impact would be, including requiring us to build 750 units of multifamily housing within half a mile of transportation hubs, I think that we would have to lose an awful lot of state funding in order to make it worth our while to do this.
Okay. Elizabeth, do you want to respond to any of those comments?
Definitely, I no, sorry, I would, I I definitely agree with Mr. Dane that the Section 3A in the legislation makes no mention of affordable housing, the draft guidelines from DHCD makes no mention of affordable housing and in all of the conversations and the workshops that DHCD has done on this on the draft guidelines, there has been no comments from the state on how this new requirement is going to impact communities and not for the better when you think about the 40B requirements and 10% of your housing stock having to be deed restricted at 80% AMI or you are subject to further comprehensive permits. So I think that's incredibly valid question and I think it is one that can should definitely be included in this letter. I think the statement about getting a commitment from the state and the legislature and the MBTA that if there is a requirement for all of these communities to have multifamily housing, which in in respects of transit orientated development, you are looking to provide housing for a broad spectrum of people, that affordability be maintained to be able to ride transit is also a very valid point and I think it's a point that should also be included in the letter. And then to Henry's last statement, I didn't quite get the direction you were going that with that, if you could just restate your third point.
I think that maybe I could paraphrase because I had a I had a question, maybe less of a statement, but a question, which was, you know, the guidelines were actually the legislation outlines the types of funding that Concord would not be eligible for. And I think Henry was asking, well, you know, that does that really amount to enough to be enough of an inhibitor for us to to actually take such a drastic set of steps to our zoning? I had heard a rumor that we really get virtually none of this type of funding anyway. But then I also saw that there was this part about eligibility for grants and that struck me as maybe something more difficult to deal with. But I was surprised that this legislation didn't have a 40B type of clause that basically said if you don't create this kind of a district, then a developer can just build whatever they want, you know, next to the MBTA as long as it meets these, you know, requirements. And they didn't do that, which is kind of interesting to me.
So to the aspects of funding, there's there's three things that are happening. One, yes, the legislation clearly just has those three funding programs, housing choice with which that program Concord currently is not a housing choice community, but more than likely we will try and once the housing production plan is redone and we can see where our our numbers are on the creation of housing, whether we would meet the thresholds and we could apply, that's something to be seen. The local capital funding, I have tried for probably the last four months to get clarification from the state. The local capital funding is revenue from gaming receipts that the legislation uses to appropriate for different projects and one of those appropriations goes to public housing. So I have not heard back from the state on whether Concord's housing authority receives funding under that appropriation or how much funding we received, so hopefully I can find that out. The Concord has not at this point applied for a MassWorks grant. It's not to say that we won't apply, Public Works won't apply for a MassWorks grant. I can think of two projects, one would be the water treatment facility for NAGOG and the other one is at some some point in the near future, there will need to be upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility. Both of those would be MassWorks eligible projects. The other factor is under the DHCD guidelines, they have added, among other things, is a clause that says that they will be able to use compliance or noncompliance as a factor in any of the grant or any of the funding programs that they administer. So beyond the three that were listed in the legislation, they have included that statement in the draft guidelines. So whether and how we could be affected is at this point, just because we may not have received funding under those three programs in the that are listed in the legislation doesn't mean that Concord won't be affected. I I agree with the comment that is what they're requiring under these guidelines, worth it for the community? That's for the community to decide. It it is it is a significant ask, it's a also a significant process to go through. One comment that somebody from the state has made is reading the legislature, it's not an option, the legislation says shall, and MBTA communities shall do this. So I don't think even the state or DHCD has really thought through the entire process of what that really will mean if a community decides that they're just they're not going to comply with this requirement. Beyond all of the other issues that are currently in the draft guidelines, which I think are somewhat unattainable for communities to even do. So I hope that provides some some guidance.
Very helpful, thank you so much.
One other comment might be that, of course, the Concord Housing Authority is a actually an independent municipal authority and it is not the town of Concord and it is more like a state agency. And what we'd have to look at is whether or not if the town did not comply, whether that would affect funding to the Concord Housing Authority because they are an independent agency.
Okay, okay. Linda, you had some comments?
Well, you know, first I want to thank Elizabeth and the board for all the work on this, significant amount of work. And I guess Terry already asked this question, I'm going to ask this question again. Would it be helpful for the select board to co-sign with the planning board submitting this or with the with the planning department? You know, I looking at Lincoln's letter, you know, I think it is helpful when you have multiple entities raising objections. And also, if if you think that would be helpful, is it too late to incorporate some of the issues that Henry brought up, which are significant?
Right, and Henry and Matt both, right? Right, go ahead.
I I definitely agree that a a joint letter shows much more solidarity on a community and has more weight and more voice. So I think if the select board agrees with the information and the position that the planning board took and and doesn't have any other additional questions, I think that would be great. I definitely think that at least the first two points that Henry made can easily be incorporated into this as a letter to the appropriate people at DHCD for the public comment period. I I think there's too many unanswered questions and to be able to accurately make take a position on the funding side of things to for me to be able to articulate that in a letter. So I would have I would find that third aspect challenging, but the first two aspects definitely should be incorporated and can be.
Okay, so in other words, those two aspects are the
Provisions for affordable housing.
Right, incorporating and coordinating somehow with the 40B quotas. And the second one, making sure that we have reliable and and continuous service. Yeah, affordable and reliable and regular service from the MBTA.
And then a third suggestion would be just run a spell check. I saw that word capacity in there.
That sounds like a good one.
Capacity, yes.
Linda, were you still?
I was just going to add that reading the MAPC analysis that's being sent to the state actually was heartening because clearly there are multiple communities who are concerned about some of the same issues that we're raising, so that's good.
Right.
But I am very glad that the town is also sending a letter of its own because I the first thing I had heard is that while we were just going to sign on to the MAPC letter and, you know, we do have a point of view here, so I I think this accurately reflects it and I really think it's a high quality document. And I would be fine with just sending it as is personally, just given the very short window of time that's available, but if those two additional points could be added, I think it would be worthwhile. So I I would leave it up to Elizabeth and the planning board, you know, if they want to make any further change, but.
That that sounds like a plan and then we can have the letter go around for electronic signatures and and have it finished by Wednesday or so, so it can get in. It can be received electronically, I'm assuming, on Thursday, doesn't have to go through the mail, I'm assuming.
No, I I believe it it can, but I'm not sure that all of the planning board members are set up for electronic signatures, so I I may have to work with Chris Carmody on that tomorrow, but.
Whatever you can get to work is fine with us, we will come in and sign it or whatever.
Okay.
But very high quality letter, thank you so much. And the MAPC letter was also very high quality, so I'm glad we're doing both. Are there other questions or discussion points on this?
Do we need a formal motion on this or do?
Yeah, why don't we have a formal motion, that's a good idea.
Okay, move to approve a joint public comment letter with the planning board responding to the draft compliance guidelines issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development in connection with MBT communities requirements is substantially reflected in the planning board memo to the select board dated March 25, 2022 and with the optional addition of two points, one about the provisions for responding to affordable housing requirements of Chapter 40B and secondly about pointing out the need for high quality, regular and affordable MBTA transportation to accompany that act.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? Okay, thank you again, Elizabeth and the entire planning board.
Thank you.
Very complicated topic and done a super job on it.
Thank you.
So coordinate with Chris Carmody and and let us know what we need to do to sign it.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay, great. Now we will move on to the Battle Road discussion and we have two people here, yeah, come on up, Melissa Saltfield and Nancy Nelson. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to, I hope, bring your speaking.
Yes, why don't we just, we have to speak right into these, yeah, there you go.
So I'll go first. First of all, there are a lot of Battle Road committees.
Yes.
I want to clarify that this has to do with the Battle Road as a CINNIE byway and the and the the obligation of the Concord Historical Commission to participate in the federal 106 review of plans proposed by Mass Department of Transportation. Nancy will go into greater detail, but I just wanted to give a brief background, I'm not sure how much any of you know, I know Linda and Terry have Linda has participated in some of the Historical Commission meetings, but the concern, this went goes back to last summer when the Historical Commission was first notified about the project. This is actually something that's been going on long before that, but we finally got an official notification for Mass Department of Transportation. The commission's position was we are very concerned about what these plans would actually do to the Battle Road and the portion of that is from 128 to the Lexington Road intersection, bypass road. Considerable changes were are being proposed, again, which Nancy will talk about, by Mass Department of Transportation. We felt that they were inadequately taking into account the historic properties of this road. As you know, millions of dollars, American taxpayer dollars have been spent to create Minuteman National Historical Park and to rehabilitate the landscape along Route 2A, the Battle Road, which overlays a fair amount of the original road down which the British marched to Concord and back to Boston. So we wrote a letter objecting to the plans and there's been some back and forth since then. However, we do not, it has taken a lot on our part to get their attention. They finally did host a meeting February 18, bringing the consulting parties of which we are one, we Lincoln Historical Commission and Lexington Historical Commission. So I'm going to turn it over to Nancy to give you more of the specifics about what their plan is and why what we object to it, but what we would support.
Okay, I don't know how much.
Take your mic.
Oh, yeah, that's right. This is kind of a new experience. It's nice to see everybody in person, it's amazing. I don't know how much people here know about the process of reviewing highway plans, Matt may, no a fair amount, but in this case, the project that has been proposed and as Melissa said, the the initial plans only came out in June of 2021, although there had been some stakeholder meetings as early as 2019, 2020, but with a selected group of stakeholders that Mass Highway identified. So the first first meetings or the first plans came out in June, no, I'm sorry, in April of 21 and there were so many mistakes in those and omissions and whatnot that they revised them and put out another batch of of plans. Everybody was expecting the plans to be at 25% level, but they were delivered at 25 to 75% level.
Can I interrupt for a minute? I don't understand what that means, 25 to 75?
It's that at 75%, a project should be buildable and there's the public, any public questions and concerns have been resolved, there have been no public meetings.
Right, so what does 25 to 75 mean?
25 was is a lot more, I don't want to say conceptual, but the
Right.
but the detail is much less, usually there will be a public meeting or several. And so you And so you begin to gather data about the project and about what the uh concerned entities think about the project.
I guess what I'm saying is I, I think I understand what 25 is and I think I understand what 75 is, but when they combine them, that process doesn't make any sense to me.
It's highway speak.
They kind of, they kind of skipped over the 25% because they thought this project was easy and simple.
Oh.
So they said there were two phases. Um, I'm gonna get off my topic, my talking points if I don't watch it.
Okay, sorry.
But um, Mass, since tw- 2019 and 20, there has been talk about two phases. So the first phase was the easy stuff. And the second phase would include, include things like more, more of these uh heavy granite structures in the middle of the road to ostensibly slow down traffic, uh signalization, widening the road, things like that. So, so we were reviewing those and then um uh those were in December of 2021 and as everybody was reviewing the 75% plans, they um passed around 100% plans and um with plan specs and estimates. So this was a little bit shocking because um because the project is 80% federally funded, uh federal uh historic preservation and environmental laws are required. And the engagement of historical commission should start at the very beginning when a project is just beginning to be defined. So that would have been 2019, but in um, in February of this year was the first time that that formal process was begun. So we've been trying to catch up with the process. And it, it's been a struggle, but I think they're trying to make up for years of lost time. So the commission letter um that um was, was finished today and, and and sent, and sent, and sent out. The commission actually specifically supports um a lot of the goals and elements of this project, which was initially described as a resurfacing project and it's been hanging around for years even before I retired. That's a long time ago. But everyone involved agrees that the speed on Route 2A as it runs through the national park is way too uh high for the safe uh use of vehicles, bicyclists and pedestrians. There aren't many pedestrians on Route 2A. But um, but everybody would support um a means to reduce speed as soon as possible. The commission and others have uh supported repaving the road with no expansion of the paved surface as it exists now. Uh, this would improve, uh, this would provide an improved paved shoulder for bicyclists and any unfortunate pedestrians who find themselves along the road at 40 miles an hour.
I have.
What?
I've been there.
You've been there?
Yeah.
It's frightening. Yeah, it's frightening. Um, narrowing the travel lane to 10 and a half feet will help to slow cars down, but and we all support uh installing steel uh backed wood guardrails within the project area. And these, these woodback, steel backed wood guardrails now exist um in different places, mostly at the eastern end of the project. So we're trying.
They look good. They, they look national park-like.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they're very important for place making. So I think even, even the people who support um the putting these raised structures in the middle of the road, they're basically obstacles to help slow people down, but they're vertical granite curbs right now. They come with um the handicap accessible crosswalks with big vertical curbing uh structures on each side of the road, the uh flashing lights, solar panels. Very noticeable and distracting colors. So there's a disconnect between the Battle Road and the concept of the Battle Road and Mass Highway's idea of easy stuff. So, so we're trying to, um, we've asked them to, as has the National Park and has uh the Lexington Conservation or Historical Commission to not do these raised pedestrian crosswalks and splitter islands until other means of slowing traffic and providing for safety are evaluated. So um, I think, um, did you have the National Park letter in your meeting materials?
Is that the March 9th letter?
Uh, February, yeah, yeah, January 9th, January.
Every night.
February 9th.
Oh.
Losing, losing.
From Simone, it says March 9th.
It says March?
We have a January 11th letter. And a March 9th letter.
No chance of, uh, no chance of getting, turning it back into a dirt road, is there?
Wouldn't that be nice? Thank you. Speak up.
Well, parts of the dirt road are still there.
We may not have this yet.
Oh.
Yeah, no, so the one we are referring to is March, uh, February 9th. I, I guess we should back up. Do you all understand what it is? You know, what we're objecting to, you know, Emory says it is close. Yes, wouldn't it be nice to be able to turn it back to an historic road? Obviously, we cannot do that.
I don't think, why is it so obvious?
Well, it's, it's interesting because this road retains um I don't want to get geeky about this, but there are his character defining features along the road now that contribute to its historic appearance and feeling and integrity. And that's the stone walls, the narrow width um of the road, the fact that there are very few, if there, the only curves I think are um asphalt, kind of curvy asphalt. Mostly it's um just grassy shoulders. There are old trees, mostly in the right of way probably. There is restored landscape on both sides, uh agricultural fields, remnant orchards, wetlands at Elm Brook, which Lincoln calls Tanner's Brook because there were tannery operations there. Um, these things are all seen from the road and they can, the road and the landscape interact to create um not, it's not a restoration, but it gives you a park feel. And so efforts have been made through the, through the decades to protect that road and, and the sites associated with the opening battle of the American Revolution first since 1925. So um, so that's what we're trying to get them to consider other options and not do those raised structures at this point in time.
Can I just ask you a quick question since you're talking about it? All these historical elements that you're talking about, are they um registered anywhere or?
There, there, um, there's a little appendix to the letter that, that the historical commission submitted to Mass Highway and federal highways, by the way. Federal highways is responsible for assuring compliance with federal law, so.
But these historical elements aren't necessarily on the national historic record?
Oh, yes, because they're in the National Park, but for the road itself, because it's not on the National Register, but it could be, in my humble opinion.
Because it's a highway.
No, because it's not owned by us, by, by the park. It's not owned by the park.
But does the, um, does the National Park have the ability to impose some restrictions on what the state does on that road?
No, they, uh, they do have influence and the power of suasion. And if you haven't met the new superintendent, she's um, she's very experienced professional and she used to work in Washington DC and Rock Creek Parkway. So she's been around, this is not her first rodeo with highway issues. And she's, um, she's living in the bullet hole house, by the way, which is very nice. So I think um they don't have any regulatory authority, but um they um they do have a say when Mass Highway puts crosswalks along the road that are meant to connect neighborhoods with um unclear demand to cross the road. And then they put them on the other side of the road so they can walk along the side of the road or whatnot to get to National Parkland. In many cases, there's four crosswalks. And there's um proposed and, and the crosswalks are going from federal land to federal land with no connecting pathways to the Battle Road Trail or any other safe paths. So the Park Service has something to say about that. Um, I think they're interested and anybody would be interested in seeing if there were places where uh crossings made sense to the National Park as well as
Yeah.
to the cycling community. I think um pedestrian use is, I think mostly these structures are there because it's the easiest thing to put in. And they have some efficacy in slowing traffic, but in, in our letter, there, there are many other options that we want them to consider. I won't read them all to you because they're enumerated in little bullets. So um you can see that. We believe there's a bigger discussion to have, to had. And we believe we can do a lot better. And we would, I think, love support.
Yeah, so.
Uh, one second. Oh, there we go. We had lost the Zoom connection. Sorry. Go ahead. We're back.
I wondered, I was wondering.
I was just gonna say, uh, this letter we just finished today. We met on Thursday evening, the um Historical Commission and at that time we discussed this and we were, we promised Met Federal Highways and Mass Department that we'd get this letter today, which we did to them. You're getting it tomorrow. So I'm sorry that um you don't have this. It would be.
So they didn't have it for.
You don't have it for this evening. I'm sorry. However, um, I hope what we've tried to get, have you understand is we are deeply concerned about the changes that this so-called repaving, resurfacing project would have on this road. You know, someone has said to me, well, you know, why should Concord, Concord isn't even really a, it is a very small portion of Concord. But it is, the project includes very small portion. However, it is one of the gateways into Concord and the National Park is in Concord. The, and as far as the historical commission is concerned, we feel very strongly that they have not taken that into consideration and we would ask for your support. I don't know if that means a letter at some point to um that you could sign and write to the Federal Highways and Mass Department of Transportation. I will remind you, or I think Terry knows this, so we did send a letter to the governor, to all our senator, or the legislation at the federal and state level earlier because we were not getting heard.
Right.
And we did get action. They, they did respond.
Eventually, right, right. So, right, so that is really one of the big purposes of this meeting is how can the select board help? Do you want us to do anything now? Do you want to wait a few weeks? What, what can we do?
It, it's, it was interesting to hear you say we could endorse or we could co-sign.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
This is a painstakingly crafted letter.
God.
Yeah, I think if we can read it.
With apologies, with apologies.
Okay, may I suggest then, how about if um we're getting the letter tomorrow, um we will put it in our packet for next week and we will take a look and, but rather than um prolong the whole discussion and start over, um do you want us to um sign on to your letter if, if we like it or if we want to add a couple minor things? Or do you want us to send our own letter? What would be the most helpful?
You could endorse, you could endorse this letter if you're comfortable with it.
Okay.
Some of it's very technical because we were trying to make the suggestions of the advice of council.
Great, and we will.
We just signed on to a very technical letter. So we're, we're not shy.
Your motion was actually very impressive.
So your, one issue that uh I think I've, I've seen is that the state intends to start work on this in 2024.
They're going to advertise it in the spring of this year.
For, and so that, uh, so that it's for them to be doing the work at the year, during the year or leading up to the year of the 250th is, is um inconvenient.
No, no, they intend to have it done by the 250th. That's one of their points that they make, that they want this done by the 250th.
Well.
I assume it's that and the infrastructure bill to have a shovel, shovel-ready project, right? So between those two, they're probably in a rush.
Well, not really because um they've started rushing before that infrastructure bill was even thought of.
As Nancy said, they started in 2019. Not, we were not notified at that time.
Well, maybe if they put it off until after the 250th, it might, there might be some other obstacle that might come up.
Okay, well.
Well, here's, here's the thing. They can do most of what a resurfacing uh project would accomplish with everybody, mostly everybody's endorsement, including the historical commission. The issue is with these raised 60-foot-long splitters and uh pedestrian crossings that go nowhere. There's safety issues and there's compatibility and appropriateness issues. By the way, Concord um is the end of the scenic byway. And that way, that scenic byway runs all the way through Concord Lexington Road, through the center of town, out Lowell Road for a bit, and then down Barrett's Mill Road and ends at uh Barrett's Farm. So it's, it's.
But they're not gonna resurface those roads.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying it's um, it's a concept and Concord has a big piece of the concept.
Yeah.
Okay, so um let us take a look at your letter. We're gonna put it on for next week.
We'll be here.
And um if you'd like, we can um, you know, talk about endorsing it and seeing if we have any other issues with it or whatever.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. That would be great.
Thank you so much for paying attention.
We can do.
Yeah.
Well, that would be great because um I'm um Lincoln, Lexington and Bedford um at, at the request of, uh, and Arlington, I believe, at the request of the Lincoln Town Manager Select Person are already weighed in and I think um it would be good for Concord.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to.
This has been a true project of tenacity. This has been a true project of tenacity uh on both of your parts. So thank you.
We persist.
Yeah, we persist. We persist.
Thank you for paying attention.
I know your agenda tonight was.
Is endless.
Amazing.
Well, we're, we're trying.
Luck, thank you.
Thanks.
If I haven't really started yet.
Yeah, really.
I know, I know.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to um our town meeting items. We will start with the consent calendar and some other announcements and deadlines uh with moderator Carmen Reese, who I think is joining us virtually.
I am here on Zoom.
Hi, Carmen.
Hi there.
Do you want to start by um just reminding everyone what all the different deadlines are that are coming up?
Sure, I don't actually have those in front of me at the moment. Give me a second to, to pull those up, but I, but I, I will say that we um uh town meeting is uh May 1st and I think it is likely that it will continue past May 1st uh onto the 2nd and the 3rd. Uh, the 1st starts at uh 1:00 in the afternoon. The 2nd and the 3rd would be evening sessions. It's my hope that we would wrap up on the 2nd, but we'll see what happens. And um, let me just one second to pull up.
If it's easier, you can um do that at the end. I just.
Yeah. Sure, and uh the, the, the important um things for uh people to know now is that we need to have motions in for all of the articles that are going to be moved in time for them to be reviewed with town council. And I believe that our meeting um with town council is on um.
It's April 18th.
Thank you very much. It's April 18th. And um, do you have the deadline for motions in front of you, Carrie?
No, no, April 14th it's gotta be, because April 18th is Patriot's Day.
Uh, April 18th is the deadline of motions. That is the deadline of motions and uh I will be meeting with the town council on the 21st.
Okay.
And um. Okay, and, and the town meeting coordination meeting will be uh April 14th and uh that is in the morning and uh we'll do a Zoom link for that. And at that meeting, anyone who. And at that meeting, anyone who plans to present on an article should join in, and we will be doing time assignments for all of the articles and, and discuss planning for presentations at town meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The other thing I will remind people is that all PowerPoint presentations, as well as handouts, that are planned to be presented or distributed at town meeting need to be sent to tmsubmissions@concordma.gov in advance. And I will look them over. And if I have any editorial suggestions, you'll get them. And otherwise, they'll just be approved. And, and then we'll be good to go. And the town will have all PowerPoint presentations loaded up on its computers in advance so that we'll have a seamless presentation of PowerPoints during the meeting. So we do all that good stuff in advance so that we have an efficient town meeting.
Excellent. Great.
Okay, so you should all have had in your packets the proposed consent calendar. And I, I, this is an annual event where after the hearings conclude, the moderator pulls together what seems to make sense as a consent calendar for town meeting action without full deliberation. And in general, only articles which have unanimous votes, unanimous recommendations for affirmative action by the relevant committees end up on the consent calendar. And only those that are either routine or not controversial in the hearing process will end up on the consent calendar. In years past, it has been suggested that we not put all of the enterprise funds on the consent calendar, but instead rotate and have a full presentation on a different one each year. Because town meeting is a place where people do get a wonderful opportunity to learn about a lot of the good stuff that our town departments are, are doing in depth when they otherwise may not hear about it. The hearings are another great place for that, too. But we get more attendance at, at town meeting. So we have 49 articles in total on the warrant. There are five on which we expect no motion. That leaves us 44 articles under which there will be a motion. I have proposed 21 articles for the consent calendar, and that will leave us 23 articles for full deliberation. And just doing a little back-of-the-envelope math, you can see that if we have 23 articles for full deliberation, if we were to spend 15 minutes on each one, town meeting would take just short of six hours. If we were to spend 20 minutes on each one, town meeting would take us a little over seven and a half hours. And I think we all know that there'll be some that will spend less than 15 minutes on and others that will spend much longer than 20 minutes on. So hard to say exactly what happens, but I think it's clear we will not conclude the meeting on Sunday. And that, incidentally, is something I would ask the Select Board to be thinking about. And that is what do you want to be the adjournment and continuance time on Sunday? We'll start at 1:00. And we could, for example, go to 6:00 if we wanted. That's five hours with no food. We could go to 7:00. That would be six hours with no food. So, you know, it's just something to think about, how long you would like to, to push. And, and I would suggest if we thought we were going to get the meeting done in one day, there would be a reason to press everyone's comfort level. But I think it's pretty clear we won't. So I'm not sure how much sense there makes and, there is in, in causing people to suffer with an extended day on Sunday. So I just throw that out there for you to think about because it will be the Select Board's decision on, on want to do that. I mean, the meeting, you'd make the motion to the meeting and the meeting will vote on adjournment and, and reconvening. But, but you'll decide when you'll offer the motion and at what time. So
And related to that, the time when we would convene on Monday, the following day, is there a set time for that or do we vote on that as well?
Historically, we've done 7:00 PM. I don't, I'm not sure. Let me just see if we said anything on the warrant about what, yes. We did, oh no, the hearings, we said would be at 7:00. Yeah, we've just said subsequent days as needed without naming a time on the warrant itself. So that means you are free to set the time. Historically, we have set the time at 7:00 PM.
Right. Okay. Well, why don't we take care of that right now? Does anyone want to convene? If we, if we need to convene on Monday, does anyone want to convene a different time than 7:00? All right. Do we have a motion?
Teri, I would, I would suggest to you that you wait till town meeting to make that motion. But you just need to be thinking about what you want the motion to do. And we all know that, that the ebb and flow is somewhat unpredictable at town meeting. And so you're gonna want to make a real-time decision. But I'm, I'm just putting it out there for you to have thought about it by the time you have to make the decision.
Right. Because when we convene on the first day on Sunday, you're probably going to want to announce something like, if we don't finish by, you know, by whatever time, we're going to continue tomorrow night.
That's true. Good point. Yes.
And wouldn't you want to let people know before?
Right. I think the Select Board should have some kind of an indication. Of course, there's an ebb and flow. If we're on Article 49 and we're gonna go five minutes over, we're gonna continue. So Carmen, do you remember, excuse me, do you recall what time we ended last time on Sunday?
Yeah, we, we finished in a little over two hours, but I will say a few things about that, Linda. We had no presentations. And we had a very aggressive consent calendar, which is more aggressive than what I had proposed for this year. And we had speakers from the floor limited to one minute, and I plan to return to two minutes for this meeting. So last year's Sunday annual town meeting is not gonna be a yardstick for us in terms of, of completing this year's. But, but on the subject of the motion, Teri, you know, often when we start town meeting in the evening, the Select Board might make a motion at the outset to take up no new business after a particular time. So that's a motion that you can be ready to make at the opening of the meeting. And we'll take that up in our preliminary meetings, but it's not something you have to settle on tonight.
Okay. Okay. I'll, I'll put that on for next week's agenda because, just to let the board know, we have a few other things we're gonna do for town meeting next week anyway, such as if we have any articles that we have to write some paragraphs about and they have to go in the FinCom book. So, so we'll also talk about the ending time for Sunday.
Are we gonna have any input on the consent calendar?
Yes. Now we're going to turn to the consent calendar. So go ahead, Carmen.
Well, I am happy, it, it's kind of self-explanatory, and I'm happy to answer any questions about why anything is proposed and why anything is not proposed among the articles for the consent calendar. And you'll note that, as of the time that I prepared this and sent it to you, we did not have committee recommendations on a number of, and still don't, on a number of the articles. And so anything, any articles inclusion on this consent calendar is contingent on affirmative, recommendations for affirmative action by the committees that I've noted on these articles. So I would pull them off if, if there were a committee recommendation for no action. And the motions are all subject to further change. They're all in draft form right now. They will be reviewed with Town Council. And the draft that you have does not have some number corrections that I received from town staff. So ignore the motions. They are subject to change. And I would ask you to just focus on which articles are included.
Okay, thank you. So are there specific questions on any specific articles for Carmen?
I, I thought the inclusion of the articles on the consent calendar made sense to me.
Okay.
I, I would like to see Article 32 come off the consent calendar, the formula, extension to the Formula Business Bylaw.
Now, Carmen, this is a moderator decision or a Select Board decision?
It's a moderator decision, but obviously I'm very interested in your input. So if you tell me, if the Select Board gives me a consensus that they'd really rather not see a particular article on the consent calendar, I will take it off.
Okay. We are scheduled to discuss and take a position on that Article 32 next week, April 4th. It's not on for tonight.
But I'd have to agree with Henry that this is a, an article, an article that has been debated, at least to some degree, you know, in the public hearing. So I was kind of surprised to see it on the consent calendar.
If you'd like a word of explanation on why it's there, I would be happy to give it to you.
Sure.
So we have, in fact, debated the Formula Business Bylaw twice for two different business districts in town. This, and in both times, there was overwhelming support for the article. And this is the third time, and it's the identical article. It's just expanding it to the third and final business district within town. And no one had a comment on it at the hearing. And I've heard nothing from anybody about this article. And therefore, I put it on the consent calendar because it was my view that we've already had this discussion in town. But I completely understand if, if there are those who feel that it still needs to be discussed.
I, I think that there's
You're hearing it now. Of course, I've been, I've been adamantly opposed to the two previous articles that imposed the Formula Business Bylaw on other parts of, of town. And I think, Carmen, you and I have had some discussions about the enforceability and validity of that bylaw. And now we are, but we still have not ever come up against the hard limit of the absolute limit on the number of so-called formula businesses. And therefore, we haven't really, we've seen the full impact of it, but we will at some point. And it is a great, it is a great obstacle to, to conducting business in this, in Concord. And I think, okay, I think it should not be extended.
Okay. So you would like to see it off the consent calendar?
That's what I said.
Matt agrees. I'm sure, Carmen, we're going to have a longer discussion about it on April 4th next Monday. And you don't have to have a final answer from us until then anyway, I think, right?
Right. My deadline on the consent calendar is the deadline when the Finance Committee report goes to print.
That's April 6th. Okay, great. All right. So that one may come off.
But I, but I would say that to the extent, there's clearly, there's, there's two, two members of the Select Board who have concerns about this being on, on the consent calendar. So I, I'm just happy to take it off. And that says to me that we have more conversation to have about it in town. So we can certainly have a, have full deliberation on it at town meeting.
Right. Okay. Other articles that should be put on or taken off? I previously talked to Carmen about Article 11, which is probably not going to be moved anyway. And that, I believe Carmen told me, is why it's not on the consent calendar, because we don't expect a motion. This is the senior means tested. We're waiting for the legislation and unless Carrie's got some more up-to-date information on that.
So you're saying 11, no motion under 11?
That's, I think so. Is that what is probably going to happen? I mean, we don't know for sure, but, yeah. Matt?
So I was just going back to Carmen's rationale for the, was it Article 32 or, and having it be or not be on the consent calendar. And that takes me to Article 16. Because Article 16 also is an issue that's been discussed twice before. And as far as I can recall, I did not hear anyone speak against it at the public hearing.
That's correct.
I haven't heard any controversy around that extension, the way it's defined. Now, I realize that, isn't it a petition article?
It is.
Yeah, it's a petition article. So it is rather unusual to put a petition article on the consent calendar. But it, it is also a kind of an unusual situation of a, a third time around.
I, I, I hear that, Matt. And I, I would say that in general, we don't put citizen petitions on the consent calendar because they are by their nature unique situations and not routine situations. I, I hear you that this is the third time this one's come up, and it has been well-supported the first two times. But I'm still more comfortable letting this one be discussed by the meeting. I, I will note that I do, I do have a zoning article that's a citizen's petition on here. And, but, but that one, I think, is in a different category because it's a, it's a zoning change that the Planning Board has heard and everyone's fine with it, and the Planning Board is recommending it. And I, I, that's a, that's a different situation than a typical citizen's petition.
Okay. Any other ideas for the consent calendar? All right. Then, thank you, Carmen, for putting that together. It's very helpful for us in our planning. And we will likely recommend Article 32 come off the consent calendar. And I think other than that, we're all set.
Okay, I think we can consider Article 32 gone. I will take it off. And Matt, I'll give some more thought to putting Article 16 on there. I'll think about it and talk with the petitioner. But my, my, my gut instinct is, is not to put it on there. And if, if there's a feel that the Select Board has about what time you think you're likely to wish to conclude the meeting on Sunday and continue it to 7:00 PM on Monday, I'd love to know what that is. It kind of, it will help in, for example, I don't want to have handouts for articles that we're not gonna get to put out because then they have to get copied twice and so forth.
Well, I think your suggestions of 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock makes sense to me. I, I think we could even decide now if you wanted that, or we can decide next Monday.
Well, you can give me a recommendation now if you want.
Okay. Well, I recommend 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. I think 7:00 is too long unless we're gonna finish the meeting. That's my personal opinion.
I'd recommend not taking up any new business after 5:00 with the goal of concluding by 5:30.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. That feels good. All right. That helps me with planning, and thank you all very much.
Okay. Taking that off the agenda for next time. Excellent. Okay. No new business after 5:00. Okay, we now proceed. We are tabling our next item, which is Article 23. after 5:00. Okay, we now proceed. We are tabling our next item, which is Article 23. The petitioner is continuing to talk with the Town Clerk's Office and the Board of Registars. They have done a great deal of work already, but they're not finished yet. So we're going to table that until next week. And we are up to Article 37. Joseph Stein is the petitioner. So I think he has some more information for us. He is there.
Well, there was a letter in the packet.
Yes. Joseph, are you on the Zoom meeting?
Good evening.
Okay. All right. Well, we can look at the information in the packet. And then we had a supplemental packet today as well. And he is attempting to answer some of the questions, such as, did he speak with the merchants in town? What did the merchants say? What does the board want to do? Are we ready to take a position? Do we want to have him come here next week? Let me just say, for each article, right after this, we're going to start going through each one. We are going to either take a vote for affirmative action, no action, continue for next week, or the Vencom book will say, report at town meeting. Those are our four options. What would you like to do with this article if the petitioner is not with us?
I see him.
Oh, he is here. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Joseph?
Hi, Terry.
Oh, there you are. Okay, great. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for putting in your material and for talking with all of those business people. Are there some questions from the board?
The only question I have about this is, I think some of the materials indicated that there were some, I think it was Town of Sudbury, had some additional, this is the paper bag one, right?
Yes.
Had some, had a more refined list of the exceptions and the inclusions in it. And I think if you're going to have such a bylaw, I think you need to have something like that.
I thought that they were good additions.
Okay. So you're saying we need more additions?
So Joseph, are you amending your motion to include those additions from Sudbury?
I would like to amend if possible. Yes.
Okay, good. I had a question about the enforcement. I think you indicated in the material that the enforcement body would be the Concord Public Works. And I'm wondering if you have spoken with anybody from the CPW to see if they are willing to do this or have the capacity to do it.
Yeah, thank you, Terry. I did reach out to the DPW. Unfortunately, I have not heard from them. It's been about a week. But I, but thank you for bringing that up. I will try to reconnect tomorrow morning.
Okay. Linda?
So clearly, you know, thank you for reaching out to some of the businesses. Clearly, mixed reaction, depending on the type of business it is, and which was not unlike what some of the other towns found in their experience. So I'm feeling, without seeing what that final motion is going to look like with all its detail and components, it's very hard for me to generate further questions at this point.
Okay.
Susan?
Yeah, I would like to see, I echo what Linda said. I'd like to see it in its new form. And then perhaps next week?
Okay. So I think that will also give Joseph time to talk with the Public Works people. Do you want to come back next week? Or do you want to, do you need more time? And then we will end up reporting a town meeting.
I'm more than happy to come back next week. And yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. So if you could send us a motion that you plan to move at the meeting, and also send it to the moderator, Carmen Reese, and then we'll talk with you next week, next Monday.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Now we are going to go through each of these articles that's on the list briefly. And if we get into a prolonged discussion, we're going to continue it next week. We're going to see how many we can get done. Okay. So the first one is Article 2. Carmen reminded me that we need to take a vote on Article 2, here reports.
It's our motion.
I know. I left it off. So-
I mean, do we have to recommend affirmative action on our very own motion?
Yes, we do, according to the moderator. So let's, let's have a motion to do that.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 2 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next one.
I mean, we just put all these in the consent calendar. So doesn't that imply-
I know.
Can we just enumerate them all and just have one omnibus motion?
No, we cannot.
Can we do what we did last time?
No, 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 no. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you why we're not going to, I've been thinking about this a lot. When we finish going through, there might be discussion on 9 and 10. And then after that, we are definitely, the next 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, we're going to have a discussion, a long discussion on each one of those.
But the ones that we put on the consent calendar.
What we did last time, as we just said, anybody who has an issue with, other than affirmative action-
I know, but they're all, they're all going to come up except-
No, but there's like, you know, like, there's a whole bunch.
There's, all right, I'll tell you what. There's a-
If we start from the end?
Yeah. Why don't we do the ones at the end? Because those are going to be on the consent calendar. So I'm going to call out the numbers, starting with 39, because I think these are all going to go in one motion. So anybody want to discuss 39?
Nope.
Forty?
Nope.
Forty-one?
No.
Forty-two?
No.
Forty-three?
Nope.
Forty-four?
Nope.
Okay. We'll have a motion on those.
Okay. Move to recommend affirmative action on Articles 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we're going to go back to Article 9, because there might be a discussion. I don't know. This is the town budget article. Anybody have any questions, comments, issues with Article 9? Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 9 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Article 10. Anybody have discussion on Article 10?
I have a question about it. And that is, I wonder who we're paying $75,000 to in order to revise the subdivision rules and regulations?
Okay. Carrie, do you know?
Sure. So we would be issuing a request for proposals with the scope of work if this article is approved or this item is approved. And we would go through a standard procurement process. So we don't know at this point who we-
It would be an outside contract.
Yes, it would.
And do we have any idea of why it would cost that much money to revise the rules and regulations of the subdivision rules and regulations?
Sure. That is an estimate based on work that we've done in the past in other communities that are doing similar work. That's what that, that scope of work goes for.
But it might cost less, right?
Unlikely.
Okay. Are there questions on Article 10? All right. Seeing none, we'll take a motion.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Article 10 passes. Article 18 is not on the list, but I just want to give a very brief update.
Oh, yeah.
That is going to come up next week, maybe. At this point, the Finance Committee guideline is 312,000 less than the school committee voted budget. So the plan now is for the two committees to have another joint meeting where they're going to try again to talk it through. And I'm recommending that the select board wait and let that process play out. So if they have not met by next Monday, I'm going to take it off the agenda again for us. And we'll have to say, report at town meeting. Does anybody want to do anything different? Okay. Article 22, we attempted to do last week, or last meeting, and we decided to wait because several of you had some questions. I think Henry and Matt were the people with questions, if I'm remembering correctly. This is the one with the exempt debt for the access road for CCRHS.
Right. And the question was about why we're going to the trouble of a debt exclusion vote for such a small expenditure.
The way I read it, I thought it was like it was, was it $20,000? But that's $20,000 a year for some period of time that is not specified.
Oh, it's more than $20,000, but yet, it costs, what, $18,000 to have an election? Something like that.
Okay, Carrie?
Sure. So the, it's been the town's past practice that any capital projects associated with the district have been presented to the town contingent upon a debt exclusion. I went back and looked. I know I shared some information with the chair because she asked the same question. The, there were two projects fairly recently. The landfill was about a million or 1.2 million. The other project escapes my memory, but it's within the last six years or so, and it was right around that same amount. And so this was presented in the same, in the same way that we have done.
And then the follow-up question, which was for the moderator, was whether it would be in scope to remove it from the debt exclusion. Because it would seem to still be in scope to me because it is taking away one of the conditions on the debt.
So I asked that question as well. And I was told that Carlisle would then have to change their warrant, and that they wanted to keep it exempt. And they, so-
So if they have-
I'm still here if anyone would like me to speak.
Okay, Carmen, you explain it.
Good. So I did have a, the question of scope is really a question of notice. And one of the questions we ask is whether people from reading the language in the warrant understand what town meeting will be asked to act upon. And that's both if they decide to come to town meeting, and if they decide they're not going to come to town meeting. And so if you, one of the issues here is there's a debt exclusion, which gives people a second opportunity to vote on this project at the polls. So you could easily see a person deciding, I hate this project. I would vote against it, but I'm not going to bother to go to town meeting. I'm going to go to the polls and vote against it instead. So you take that away. We have now compromised notice, in my view. So I would regard-
I find that persuasive. Thanks. That's all I needed.
All right. And, and the other issue is that anything Concord does, Carlisle has to do in exactly the same way. And otherwise, it's a mess for the, for the, for the district. So, and Carlisle's already printed their warrant, and it says the same thing. And they're going to move it this way.
Okay, I'm fine.
Thank you, Carmen. And I guess the next time that something like this comes up, maybe we can talk about it before it goes to the warrant so that we can, I would say if it's under $1 million especially.
It's really questionable whether it makes sense.
Right. Okay. So we have not yet taken a position on Article 22. Are we ready to take a position?
I'm fine now.
Oh, I see we have one comment from a member of the Finance Committee, Dean Bamfield.
Dean Bamfield, 73, Walden Terrace, member of the Finance Committee. I don't know that I can really speak for the Finance Committee, but I'm, I'm here to mention something that came up at the Finance Committee. There's a notice requirement associated with the vote that would occur. And I would just like some clarity on whether that notice requirement has been missed. Or there was some comment at the, at the Finance Committee. So could I just get some clarity on that?
My understanding is that it will have to go on the next ballot, which will be September 6, the primary, because we did miss the notice for the-
It was my understanding that the whole process was going to be moved to the special meeting, and that this might not be moved. That was what I, that was my takeaway from the Finance Committee meeting. But maybe the moderator can-
We don't have a special town meeting set up.
Well, there's an anticipated special town meeting for September that we, that I understand.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Carrie?
I just wanted to provide one comment, which was not on any anticipated special town meeting. The ballot, or the warrant for the election was posted and printed at the same time as the town meeting election. And so that's the issue, that, that we would have, you would have had to have voted on a, on a debt exclusion question before both, both warrants were posted. And so that, I'm not sure if that was unusual to what we have done in the past. But that was definitely, something that, that caused an issue, was the, the way and the time that the election ballot was posted. It's actually in the, in the warrant itself.
But then that means that paving is going to happen during the school year? Is that?
Yes. It will. But Dr. Hunter, Dr. Hunter is okay with it. We have spoken with her. They're going to work around it.
To clarify about a September town meeting, that was another bit of information that occurred at a Finance Committee hearing. And that was Alan Cathcart, who will need funding for Nagog Pond Treatment Plant, was anticipating coming to some sort of September town, creating some sort-
We can watch the paving from our special town meetings.
Just, I'm just bringing, he indicated that some, that some debt was going to be required.
Okay.
And that that was going to be something that would come in, that they would need to call for something in the fall.
All right.
To get that debt.
We'll watch out for that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry to, sorry to interrupt your-
We're always the last to know.
Those hearings were public, and you could have come.
Okay, Article 22. Are we ready for a vote?
Okay. Move to recommend approval of Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Now we are on, we're skipping Article 23 tonight. And for Article 24, I would like to ask Carrie to talk about the latest thinking before we take that one up.
Sure, thank you. So Article 24 is a request to appropriate half a million dollars for affordable housing. In the last several years, this has come from free cash, because free cash is lower than it has been for a number of years. And really, at the, the bottom of our policy requirements, it doesn't really make sense to do a free cash appropriation for this item. But in recognition that it's important for the town to continue its affordable housing initiatives, my recommendation would be that you look at ARPA as a source of funding. The Affordable Housing Task Force, Affordable Housing Trust has spoken about this at a couple of different meetings. If, if the ARPA funding is taken in 100% as lost revenue, and we haven't, we haven't talked about this yet, but the most recent guidance that is coming out of the federal government is that for non-entitlement communities, so communities that are under 50,000 in population, there is strong encouragement that you, that we just take that money in as lost revenue and deal- as lost revenue and deal with it that way. It makes it much easier, the reporting requirements are much easier, and in this particular instance, it makes the ability to use that ARPA funding for affordable housing broader, because there are an awful lot of restrictions in the ARPA legislation as it relates to affordable housing, and it makes it difficult for it to be used in Concord because of the percent to median household income that it's restricted to. But if it's taken in as lost revenue, we can, we can use it any way we deem appropriate, and I think that makes more sense, because otherwise, we really would be in a position where we're really bumping up against, if not violating, our own free cash policy by making this appropriation.
But this lost revenue, right, can't we just dump the money into free cash, and now we have a bigger free cash balance, and then allocate from there?
Yes, you, you can, but.
And then we wouldn't have to modify the motion.
The, and, and that, that may very well be, we are trying to, so, I guess, two things that, the first thing, free cash, that would not be included in the free cash certification, and I don't think that's, it's, that's not a problem.
Right.
We would just need to be, right, we need, need to be upfront about that. We're, we are still trying to understand from the federal government and the Department of Revenue, if it comes in as lost revenue, what's going to happen to it? Because is it, is it going to come in, we just don't, we spend whatever in fiscal 22, and then let it fall to, to fund balance, and it becomes certified the following year? Is it going to be treated different than that? We're trying to understand, but for all intents and purposes, if we agree we're taking it in as lost revenue, I think we would leave the motion the way it is, with the understanding that while it might not be part of the current free cash certification, we have this pot of money coming in for next year's certification, if that's the way it's going to work.
Okay, I didn't understand this one part.
Sort of like gap results versus non-gap. Yeah. It's like, yeah.
So, you said we'd leave the motion the way it is. That's where I'm a little bit lost. So, the motion says to determine whether the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash.
Basically, on the floor of town meeting, if necessary, we could make that adjustment.
Well, that's going to be my question. I'm not sure that.
We're just picking an account.
Um, it doesn't say, or transfer from available funds. I just want to get clarification that we'd be able to do it legally.
So, we, and again, we, we need a little bit of time to understand the mechanics of it.
Okay.
And I, I just want to be upfront, so that people know that if, if we are appropriating for free cash, it's really, it's the, the ARPA pot of money that, that we're going to.
Making it possible to do this.
Right.
Absolutely.
Well, what I, what I was thinking was that we were going to take no action on Article 24, and explained to the town that we were going to use the ARPA money through free cash, but I guess whatever way town council says, it is fine with me.
Really, we want, we're, we're going to do it. The only question is how we do it.
Right.
And this way, the town votes to do it, which is what I like.
Well, I do too, but I'm not sure it's going to get ruled within the four corners. I'm a little bit nervous looking at it.
No, well, we could still allocate from free cash, we'll just go below our, our guideline. We will still have the cash.
I see. Linda's been wanting to talk.
Yeah, so, so, a couple of, I appreciate that we still need to understand the mechanics. My understanding, reading the material originally, was that if we took it in as lost revenue, that there still was the caveat that it, we could not allocate it to a reserve, which free cash could be interpreted as a reserve?
No, no, that's not what that means.
It's not a reserve fund.
No, it means you can't directly allocate it to a stabilization fund.
Yeah, like OPEC or something else, or whatever we're trying to do. I understand, okay. We did hear at the last FinCom meeting, you asked the question, would it make a difference whether the money was coming from ARPA or free cash in terms of how, whether or not they would vote to approve the appropriation? And then the, the other issue that I thought of was.
What, what was the response to that question? Yeah, I think that, you know, they have not voted yet. They want us to vote first. Okay. But they're very inclined to go with the ARPA recommendation.
The answer that Chris Reynolds gave Terry was, yes, it would make a difference.
Right.
So, I took that to.
Yeah, that's how I took it. I mean, she couldn't speak for the committee, but, because they haven't taken.
So, the other piece of this is that, by, if we decide that ARPA is going to come in as lost revenue, which then gives the town manager the ability to, with Select Board approval, to allocate those funds where she sees fit, by having this article using, go through town meeting, you're setting a precedent, I think, for the use, how those ARPA funds, who has the authority to allocate those ARPA funds?
So, if.
Did you follow what I'm?
If.
Well, we're already allocating some of the FY22 funds.
Visiting the budget, you know, yeah.
Right. If, if I could.
The town manager's made that decision with our, with our.
So, if we take these, all of this in as lost revenue, it has to be appropriated. It can't be, it would require, as a grant, it does not require further appropriation by the town. If it comes in as lost revenue, it's just essentially a local receipt, and it has to be appropriated.
And that's what we're doing.
That's right.
Right. And for free cash, because we've got receipts, and now we have cash.
Right, so we're not.
But it's in the wrong fiscal year, so the mechanics are complicated. You, you probably would dip down below and then go back up, and that's all right, because the free cash won't count.
Can't we allocate it to, I mean, I don't understand why, I mean, we're allocating some of it to FY22.
But we did that directly.
And this is FY23.
We did that directly through a, through a town meeting appropriation, just as, as ARPA funding.
Right.
We probably technically didn't have to have town meeting vote on that. Well, actually, that was, that was taken in as, that was lost revenue as well.
Yeah.
It's, it's very, I can tell you, we've, we've had, I, I've had some heated discussions back and forth with, with some of the staff. It's very difficult to understand the mechanics of it, and nobody seems to want to answer the question, because it's really up to the State Department of Revenue, and it's not their, it's not their money. So, they don't really want to give any guidance, and the federal government, we talked to a staffer in Lori Trehan's office, and they, they don't care about this issue, and so, we're, we're just having a little difficulty understanding the right language to use to accomplish.
Do our auditors have an opinion?
Not so far.
What about town council?
Yeah, I, I will, I'll be talking to town council later this week about a couple things I will ask about this, and we're still working with the state.
Do you want us to take a position tonight, or do you want to wait till after that conversation, and we'll vote next week?
Well, what's the alternative? If we, if we take, if, if we don't approve this, there is no alternative, right?
There is still, there is still an alternative.
We're, we're going to do it.
Which would mean the town manager to directly, you know, direct the funds to, to the.
So, I don't see any, I see no harm in us voting.
To support it.
To support this.
That's right.
I mean, then, then it's just a question of how you write the motion, or how you, how you implement it.
But depending on.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
This, this is the moderator. Just, if it's helpful, I would like to tell you that if the particular source of the funding is a little different from what's described in the article and the warrant, I don't have a problem with that. It's, it's the same amount of money, it's the same purpose, and the omission of transfer from available funds is not a problem, in my view.
Oh, okay, okay, that's important, all right. I have sometimes seen moderators take exception to that. All right, that's really good to know. And so, we could take, we could vote affirmative action on this then, and then if Carrie comes back to us at some point and says the mechanics are different, you need to do it this other way, then we can reconsider our vote if we have to, so.
Let's put it behind us.
Yeah, all right.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 24 as written in the warrant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, it's. So, so we're prepared for the Finance Committee opposing it?
No. Do you anticipate the Finance Committee is going to oppose it?
No, I, I don't, with the understanding that.
I mean, we just heard from the moderator, I think that that was a pretty key point.
The motion will say.
That we have other ways to get this money.
That it's coming from our, so. Okay, so, it is now 9:15, and our plan is to get through as many as we can tonight, and to continue the rest next Monday. So, we still have tonight some long ones to go, and then we have a few miscellaneous items and some public comment. Do you want to do, let's say, 25 and 26, and then check in and see, or Melissa, Melissa's here.
They'll take some time.
Yeah, they're all going to take time, so maybe we can use the same rule as town meeting, whatever, we'll pick a time, and whatever we're up to by then, and then we're going to stop.
Well, I mean, if, for instance, on 25 and 26, we're, we may all agree to, to vote for no action, or to recommend at town meeting.
Might. I kind of doubt it, but.
All right. It may not take much discussion to come up with, unless there's, when we kind of just get a feeling for it.
Okay, let's go up to 25 right now and see how, how much progress we can make, and then, at some point, if someone wants to say, I think we should stop for now, we'll, we'll stop at that point and, and see what the group wants to do. So, let's continue with 25 for now. This is the Asbit River Bluff Preservation Project. I'm not sure if Elizabeth or Delia is here with us, or, I think we have a pretty good sense of the project.
I think they're still asking for, applying for grants to get other pieces of the funding.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
I think, was there two possible $500,000 grants, but they'll only get one?
Right. I still have a question about trying to figure out, well, it's a beautiful piece of property, and there seems to be a lot of support for it, and I'm just really disappointed that we can't put on more affordable units. And sort of the second part of that is, I know we don't have a number yet for what the cost per unit will be, but is there any way to get an estimate of that?
Well, are they going to, I mean, I got the impression that they were going to have a private developer do the construction, or that they were, rather than use our money to do the building?
They said there were any number of possible strategies, including, you know, the Habitat for Humanity, and, yeah, there's.
A little big for Habitat, that project.
Three units? I don't think so.
Freestanding.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Elizabeth, yes.
So, also, who is still on this call is Liz, Liz Rust. She is the Director of our Regional Housing Services Office, and I think she's prepared to answer that question for you.
Oh, thank you very much, Elizabeth and Liz. We can't see who's on Zoom, so that's great. Liz. Liz Rust, are you there?
Yeah, Liz Rust here. Good evening. So, I think you were asking about the eventual development of plan and costs for the housing, and I think Matt described it well, in that there are many options, or a few options, Habitat being one, and including rental housing as well as homeownership. I, I think it's very clear that the CHDC would not be the actual developer, and would put out the, the development through an RFP to a private or nonprofit developer, so that there'll be a public process for that, and I think when that comes back, then the understanding of the construction costs would be understood, and including what kind of funding sources might be available for that. And that would be in some, some, you know, matter of, you know, a year, two years, something like that.
Right, so the difficulty is that the voters are, are going to go in now and think, well, there's five units, and I think about a million dollars of this project is for housing, so that would be about 200,000 per unit, plus an unknown amount for construction. Is there any way, you know, I mean, we all kind of had the feeling, we had one recent project that seemed to be over the line, and we went back and redid it, and Habitat is involved now, and, and that was a good decision. So, sometimes, it just feels like this is a really good way to create affordable housing, and sometimes it feels too expensive, and we, how do we get a sense for that with this article?
Well, I think that the article is an opportunity article. I mean, this is right now in front of the town, and it's the combination with the open space that makes it the compelling situation that it is, so it's not just the housing piece. The, the housing portion, you know, is a, is a, is a parcel that could be developed in and of itself, and if the, you know, the, I think that you're aware that the memorandum of understanding allows the housing portion to be sold, if it didn't, if it wasn't able to proceed, and then those funds would be returned, so there's a, there's a way out, if you would, like over some period of years. So, I think that there's some comfort in that, I guess. There's also two units of existing housing on the site that wouldn't be, you know, there's some renovation work that would be needed for that, and the, one thing to, to keep in mind, the Housing Authority project that came forward uses public construction wages, which adds 40% to construction costs. This would not be subject to public construction.
Right.
So, there's going to be, it's going to be less, and, and hopefully, in a couple years' time, some of the supply chain and COVID construction increases would be reduced. So, I think there's some benefit for holding the property and taking time to design it well, to understand the, the goals and the, you know, the fossil-free, you know, aspects of it, and how to site the units, and to really get the best situation before jumping into a construction estimate at this particular time, when it probably will be a couple of years before ever it comes to tax, making sure that it's a financially and fiscally responsible action for the town.
Thank you, that's very helpful. If you could please send over the MOU to the town manager's office, and that way, all the Select Board could have copies.
Yeah, I think I've seen it.
It's posted, it's posted somewhere?
It's posted on the, the Affordable Housing webpage of the town.
Affordable Housing webpage?
It's part, you know, underneath in the planning area, you can get to it, and I'm, I'm sure we can provide a link as well, but it's.
Okay, thank you, that's great. Other questions for Liz, or Elizabeth, or anybody?
I mean, I, if we're moving from questions to opinions?
Sure.
I mean, just for me, this seems sort of incomplete, right, that we are doing the fundraising for the open space portion, and that will be taken care of, and for the land aspect of the affordable housing, but we're leaving this sort of undone on affordable housing, and it's, it feels similar to the Juro project, where there was a combination of open space and affordable housing, and the affordable housing didn't happen. And, and here, we don't have any guarantee that it's going to happen, but we are procuring more open space through the process of saying, hey, it's got affordable housing as a component. So, I, I just wish we. So I just wish we could, you know, have enough financial wherewithal in this project that would kind of, you know, in the proposal here, that would get us to actually being able to construct some units, you know, rather than hope that we will be able to. And, you know, that's, it's disappointing. It just always seems like the, you know, affordable housing is the one area where we have to hold a bake sale, I mean, versus, you know, these bigger appropriations for other stuff.
So it really boils down to we're paying $1.5 million and don't know what we're getting.
Well, I mean, we're getting a parcel. I mean, we do know that what we're getting is a parcel.
We're buying land for $1.5 million.
And we are constraining it with an MOU that says how many units we can build on it. And that's, that's all we're doing.
I just wanted to say it's $1 million, not a million and a half. Just a technical detail.
There's a CPA money is a million, and then there's 500 under Article 25. Is that a million and a half?
Oh, I'm sorry, so a million and a half for all seven acres?
But it's, okay, but it's still a million.
It's a million for the affordable housing. That's the allocation to housing anyway. Out of the 2.8.
Madam Chair, can I make one other observation?
Absolutely.
Is that by purchasing this property, while you may not have a 100% idea on the affordable housing aspect of it, what you do know is if the town owns it, the town controls it. So what you won't be getting is a planned residential development for 20, 30-something units. Should we fall below our 40B 10% requirement, you won't be getting a comprehensive permit. So while we may not have all the pieces lined out for what the affordable housing piece will look like, we do know what we won't have by controlling it.
And we're in a position to be below our 40B limit, it sounds like.
But wouldn't you say the same thing about any other parcel of land that was available for purchase?
There's, they're very, very... There's fewer and fewer parcels that are close to the village, directly adjacent to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, that can provide both aspects of housing and open space. And that won't be the case if the property is sold to a developer.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Well, I don't want to lose the opportunity to do this. What I've been bothered by is just the split of costs, that for one acre, housing is kicking in $1 million, and for six acres of conservation land, it's, let's say, $2 million, 2.9. Is that what the total is?
1.8. 1.8.
For the six acres?
Right.
For the six acres.
2.8 total, so it would be the 1.8.
And it just seems like the housing dollars are subsidizing open space. I mean, just in terms of the ratio. And I know that you can't have it, or it's difficult to do it perfectly, but I wish there would be more money in the fundraising on the open space part of it. I don't, I wouldn't, that wouldn't cause me to vote against it, because I don't want to lose the opportunity.
Okay. Are people ready to vote tonight? I'm listening to all this, and I'm not sure I'm ready to vote. I will if everybody else is ready.
I don't think we're voting the same way.
Diane?
Yes, thank you, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road, Chair of the CPC. Good evening. I think that the CPC has spent many hours on this particular item, as you know, from our funding side of things. And the thought of developers moving into that space and the kind of massive building that might take place there is, what I'd like us to take into consideration, among other things, is the neighborhood and what kind of crowding and circumstances that would produce. I think this is, in many ways, a kind of, it's a perfect compromise. As for more public housing space or more public housing opportunities, in order to do that, you'd have to build more housing in general in that area in order to underlie the costs. And maybe Liz can help me on this, but in order to make those costs, and Liz, both Lizz's can help me with this, in order to make that kind of building possible. So I think this is very important. This is a fantastic opportunity for the town. I think we would regret it if we didn't move forward. Thank you.
I think under our zoning, that the, in a PRD, you could have up to 11 units and up to 22 if they were all affordable. Well, 22 affordable units, I mean, that would be a large project, but they would be all affordable, that would be a significant affordable housing component. And it would be six units if it was a traditional subdivision, even cutting out the duplex. So I, you know, I don't know. Elizabeth was talking 30 units, but that's only in the case of a 40B project. And that's, I sure hope, I mean, it's tragic that we're sitting here after all the work we've done. And that it's somehow, we're still going to be at this, in jeopardy of being below the threshold. And that we're doing Hail Mary type of things like this to try to avoid some project.
The last estimate I heard was 10.04%, if that helps you.
Oh, well, that would be great if we could somehow squeeze by.
No, because they have to have the permits, you know, they're not going to have permits by then. I don't think that we seem ready to vote on this. If anyone wants to make a motion, go ahead. Otherwise, I think we're going to continue this discussion. Okay.
I just tried to think about what other information are we going to receive that we don't already have?
That's a good point. Well, actually, there's one thing that might help, which is the next article is Article 26. And I know Diane is here with us on Zoom, and it's awfully late, and I'm wondering if we should start on that whole article. But it does provide possibly a little bit more information on, since one of the components is the Asbit Bluff, I mean, not necessarily, but... One of the things I was thinking about suggesting was, since we have the proponents here for Article 30 and Article 38, that possibly we would do those, I don't know.
We could just skip to those.
That's what I'm thinking. So let's continue Article 25 and 26 to our next meeting. Okay. And we'll continue 29 here. Why don't we just do 30 and 38 tonight, and then we'll continue? All right. Article 30, Melissa. This is the scenic roads bylaw. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you, well, first of all, I think I'm here just to answer questions. I didn't know if you wanted me to actually, I think most of you have heard the presentation I did for the Planning Board. If there are additional questions for the bylaw?
I had one. First of all, I apologize if I was very aggressive at the public hearing.
No, you weren't.
But the, and I probably didn't express myself clearly enough as far as what my specific concern. My specific concern is that we have a procedure for the identification of these scenic roads that ensures that the bylaw is not seen as being arbitrary or capricious in the selection of those roads. And what I mean in this case is, you know, if a road was initially selected where there's anticipated developments in, you know, right at this moment, or where there's active litigation, you know, that these are things where maybe the interpretation of people about why that road is on the list may not be strictly because of its scenic character. And so that's why I believe that we should have a procedure that says, yep, these are the five, 10, you know, priority roads for these objective criteria. That's what is on my mind.
Well, the criteria that I presented, which is consistent with what other communities have done, actually, that's how we arrived at it. We investigated a number of the criteria for towns across the Commonwealth. And those items, you know, the generalist, the appearance of the, or the presence of stone walls, canopy trees, historic monuments, historic sites, vistas along the way. And then additionally, a number of towns referenced a certain map, an old map. So in our case, we picked this Walling Mac from 1852, which was a town authorized map, so that the road has to appear on that map. And we, again, we reviewed, you know, the Concord's whole system of roadways and identified nine for this initial year. In the future, if the bylaw passes, other roads could be nominated. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, even like the selection of a particular map versus another map is, believe it or not, something that is contentious.
Well, we could have gone older, but we...
You know? You know what I mean? I don't know if you realize that there's a lot of battles over maps and what roads are on what maps in Concord. So I'm just saying, you know, I don't know, the criteria, we just need a crisp set of these criteria for why a particular road is on a list, you know? And why it might come off the list if it was proposed, too.
Well, a crisp set. I can't be more crisp than what I have suggested, because that's consistent, you know, that first of all, it is somewhat subjective, obviously. If you're looking at a road, you see stone walls and canopy trees, and some people say, well, it's not adequate, or it's been altered too much. Like, for example, the Virginia Road, there's been a fair amount of construction work done on Virginia Road. That was some, a road somebody had suggested, well, gee, why aren't you doing that? And we felt, and a lot has changed with that road. So yes, I suspect there, you know, there's always going to be subject to, because this is a judgment call. These, you know, we have historians evaluating these, these nine roads that we have suggested. Future roads could be, there may be some roads at town, maybe at town meeting, that people will say, that's ridiculous, why would you suggest that one?
So Melissa, can you just remind me, did you have an FAQ?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you did, okay. And the criteria is listed there, okay.
Right, I was just looking at the criteria.
And also, I would say that the criteria is also consistent with what the state, I mean, this derives from state, original state legislation. And, you know, that's where we started with what the state proposed and what the state's scenic road. The state had its own FAQ that we used to help develop our own and made it more specific than for Concord.
Okay, thanks.
So the two roads that I heard were Virginia Road, which you just answered, and Lowell Road. Can you say why?
Lowell Road, it could be in another year. Again, we picked nine. Again, if this passes next year, in 2023, we could propose Lowell Road.
So that didn't have any particular reason why?
No.
Okay, okay. Other questions? All right, is everyone ready to vote on Article 30?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Move to recommend affirmative action, our Article 30 is written in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was harder than you thought.
Okay, we will go to Article 38. Dean Banfield, who's been waiting how many hours have you been sitting back there?
I'm just here to answer questions. I didn't bring anything to present, so...
Thank you for that. I've had a lot of requests for people to present again, and I've been, no, we're not presenting again. We've already seen your presentation. Thank you, Dean. Does anyone have questions on Article 38?
Dean, have you had a chance to go before CMLP yet?
It has not been voted on yet. They had a strategy review session at their last meeting, but they did not get to this article, and they have an extra meeting scheduled for this Wednesday. And so they have not met.
Did you present to them specifically for questions and answers?
I have not been asked to, and I have not presented to them. I have provided them my PowerPoint and a letter, but...
Well, if this was something we were confident that they would do on their own, there would not be much reason to have this encouragement provided to them.
No comment.
Okay, other questions?
So you made a good case for trying to get an action plan that doesn't currently exist in CMLP's strategic plan. Is this also being motivated by the middle school?
Let me just comment on that briefly, if I might. The middle school is not anticipated to have students in it or have its doors open until 2025. And there are numerous opportunities in the community where we have a lot of impervious surface, a lot of rooftops, that could be, project plans could be developed and done before 2025. So the reason that I brought this article forward was because in the process of seeing the activity around CMS, it was clear to me, A, that we can do this, but B, that we have plenty of opportunities to do this in other places more quickly. We don't have to spend three years designing a system to get it on top of a school. So that's my editorial on that. Yep.
Thank you.
I mean, I think it's normally our practice to wait and see if we can hear from the committee, you know, that something like this is aimed at, and then hear what their reasoning is and whether they support or not. And then I think we'd have the chance next Monday to vote.
If I could add one more piece of...
Sure.
CSEC and the CAB have both voted for affirmative action for this. So if that is of any interest.
I'm the liaison to them and to CMLP.
Yeah, I apologize, I did not realize that they had not heard it yet. I thought they had scheduled it a couple of weeks ago, so...
Nope.
Okay.
That had been the hope, that when we got to the strategy session, that it would include some discussion of this, but it did not.
But it's definitely on the agenda for Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The whole point of the extra meeting was to discuss this.
All right, then I guess in fairness, we will have to take that up next week.
Will you extend an invitation to...
To have CMLP come in next week?
Yes, to express themselves on it, if that's what you're waiting for.
I guess it would be the Light Board or...
I'm the liaison, I can report back.
I will let...
That's also possible, but we could certainly say that whoever, a designated member could...
I mean, if we're going to wait for input from them, they should know that...
They should know, and then they can decide if they want to send in...
Then we can choose to ignore it.
Well, let's see.
Okay, all right. So I apologize, Dean, if I had known, you wouldn't have been sitting there for two hours.
No problem.
He had to be someplace.
He had to be someplace.
But you contributed on that other article anyway, so, all right, thank you.
No problem.
So I see Mark Galis is here, and I'm wondering, Mark, do you think we can try and do your article in a few minutes?
It's up to you.
Do you want, I... Do you want to do it the same night that we do Article 46? Or, because I'm not going to do both of them tonight. But if you want, we can just take up your article, since you've been sitting here. All right, let's do that. All right. Article 47 on the reformatory branch. Do people have questions for the petitioner, Mark Galis? No questions? Okay.
No, I think.
I guess a question I'd have is how can a former rail bed be kept in a natural condition?
Well, it, it's been quite some time since it is a former rail bed, and it's in the middle of rare species habitat. Um, trees have regrown over portions. The trail actually deviates from the rail bed in the, in, in a significant portion. So, um, natural in this case means, you know, what nature has recovered and what the environment around it is. Um, yeah, it's, it's not pristine, you know, old forest or meadow. But if you walk it, it feels, uh, you know, very nature immersive and, uh, and again, it is in a rare species habitat and goes by, uh, uh, more swamp, wetlands, et cetera. So in, in this, in this sort of ecological, environmental sense, and that nature immersive sense, and also being adjacent to great meadows.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess the, the other question is, what is the effect of the, you know, the article? If, so it's a recommendation, I guess it's, it's non-binding in its effect, right? It's, but it is a strong suggestion, clearly, if the town weighs in and says, yep, this is the way we want this. Um, just trying to understand the effect of this.
Yeah, it, it's advisory. I think it has a great deal of, of present value for many users and for the ecological systems and for great meadows and, um, runs by the, um, uh, behind the land that belongs to the cemetery, um, uh, property there. So it's, it's, it's not something that should be, um, changed dramatically with a lot, out of a lot of thought. And so I just wanted to kind of give people the chance to weigh in and express this present value. And it has, I think, a lot to do with the character of town. People come, you know, birders and other nature lovers, uh, come to that area and appreciate it. Um, part of it is, is used as an access road for great meadows, uh, the part that goes from Monson Road East. So I, I, I think there's a lot worth preserving, uh, and that needs to be put into the whole picture of, you know, what is done with it.
Is your suggestion also, does this go to Lowell Road?
I'm sorry?
Does, does, uh, reformatory branch and, and this idea that you would not make the trail wider, does that include the segment between Monument Street and Lowell Road?
Well, the, um, as I understand it, the segment between Monument Street and Lowell Road, uh, is, uh, goes through a piece of conservation land, uh, that's controlled by the NRC. And, um, when I say not make it wider, um, what I'm really saying is not kind of lay, I'm just, this is my personal understanding of that, not, you know, cut a wide, you know, 30-foot swath through things. Small adjustments, taking care for what is there, uh, in terms of the trees or, um, other, uh, you know, more natural, um, surfaces is, is all that I'm saying there. I think there's a very narrow part of it.
Yeah.
Right by, right by the lumberyard, where it used to go through the lumberyard. Uh, so I, um, when I talk about the trail, I'm talking about, you know, what is, what is walkable and what is townland right now.
Yeah, because that section actually is difficult to be used as a multi-use trail because it's too narrow for a bike and a walker to pass one another.
Yes.
So, you know, I just look at this and I think, well, there are parts of the trail that really, I think do need to be wider if they're going to be a multi-use trail.
Yeah. Well, as I say, that part is, um, I mean, the, the separate ownership of it, of some of the different pieces are purposing is, uh, is, uh, you know, a factor in, in what.
I think it's also kind of a, if you will, a counterbalance or, uh, an opposition to, uh, 46.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
I mean, and presumably we're, we will, we will not vote to affirmative action on both.
Well, I, I'm not sure. I don't, I think we'll discuss 46 next week, but I'm personally in favor of both of these articles. And, uh, for example, 47, one of the things, if it passes, it could inform the needs assessment that could, if 46 were to pass.
Well, we won't, let's like.
We'll talk about that next week, but.
We may have to arm wrestle about that one.
Yes, I think, we're just going to talk about 47 right now.
May I say, say something to that? Um, uh, it, it's not meant as, you know, being a direct opposition. It's meant to kind of highlight what could be lost if care is not taken to, to, you know, have the whole community weigh in, including people who come to Concord and use the trail, many of whom, uh, really value it and have written a lot of positive comments. So going, going slow and preserving, I think, is what it's about.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're ready for a motion for 47.
Oh, so, okay, so you, you do want to go ahead with a, a motion in, even though we haven't heard 46? Do you think that that has any effect on whether the vote that we would take on 47?
If you want, we can wait. I'm, I'm ready to vote.
I think that we've gotten all of our questions answered and everything. I mean, we're all set. I don't know that it would take another debate, um, for 47.
Right.
I mean, we could also vote now, but I just think it probably, given the linkage between the two articles, it's probably worth understanding what our position or, or what the petitioner's position.
Hearing a full select board discussion.
That's, that's what I think.
Okay, okay, we can, we can put that off then.
Again, I think that we've gotten a good discussion tonight on this.
Definitely. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
You can sleep late tomorrow.
There's actually a trails, uh, trails committee, I'm going to present at the trails committee tomorrow morning, between eight and nine, and then they're going to have a walk on the trail.
Yeah.
Well, that's important.
I have a meeting that's going to truncate my walk.
Okay, let's finish our, let's finish our meeting for now. So we're up to committee nominations.
So, uh, James Bartlett Littlefield of 523 Bedford Street to the Board of Registars, and Ha Richmond of 144 Nishova Road to the Cultural Council.
And committee appointments.
So move to appoint Elizabeth Cobbs of 31 Pondview Lane to the Personnel Board for a term ending April 30th, 2025. Daniel Drazen of 197 Belknap Street, Concord, to the Concord Housing Development Corporation, uh, for a term ending April 30th, 2025. And Nancy M. Crowley of 5 Concord Green to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee for a term ending April 30th, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you to all of those people for volunteering. And for miscellaneous correspondence, we have a few pages, um, regarding Estebrook Woods and a few pages regarding White Pond. And we are ready for public comment. Is there any public comment on Zoom? All right, I don't see any.
Yep, me.
Oh, hi Pam, Pamela Jurt.
Yep, they're talking about, uh, Concord Green, Unit 4. I just want to echo what you said. I am in favor of voting for both of the articles about the trail. I think it's very important to have natural footpaths through the woods. And it's very big difference to be able, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is lovely, but it is not a natural path. And every one we take away is taken away permanently forever from our future children's generation, generations. Let's leave some covered with leaves instead of pavement. We always have, have accessibility, um, vehicles available for even paraplegic and other, uh, disabled people to also enjoy the trail in its natural condition. Because those kinds of things exist. Uh, and also, I agree with what Diane Proctor said about the parcel that we should do this. It's very important, even if no affordable housing gets built there, although I'm sure it will be built, because we need to protect the land itself.
Okay, thank you very much, Pamela. Anybody else, um, have a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Harry. I'm sorry, I, I raised my hand late. May I just say something?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So yes, uh, Article 47's purpose, we were going to probably put that, try to put something like that in the warrant anyway, whether Article 46 had been moved or not. And, um, just wanted to make that clear. And as, as has been said, we just would like the trail to stay natural. It is a natural trail. And as Matt pointed out, it is only a recommendation. So, thank you.
Thank you. We cannot see here if you have your hand up, um, for public comments, so if you do, please just speak. Okay, I think we are all set. Now we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Henry.